Or on Summer Street. Like literally.
Oh.
At some station. Just walk right up the bridge. It's like literally right there over the bridge. Yeah, that's the time of day.
And they're still there?
Yeah, yeah, they're still there. Yeah, fantastic.
I tried to go there one time with the reservations were like booked out for like weeks.
Yeah, I went there. I went there for lunch one day with Maya Poffus.
So everybody, I just was alerted that our mics are hot.
Okay, well, they got all the, they all got all the talking those.
So. Corotac? Oh pork, okay. I tried making turkey one time and it not come up. Nice. Round turkey?
No, no, there's no reason to do ground turkey. I looked it up. It's not even healthier. It's not even healthier.
It was, it didn't, it did not work good.
You're reinforcing the concept, but it's just using.
Yeah.
Because Ryan wasn't eating them, so I was like, I'm gonna make them healthier.
No. No. My mother-in-law will not use ground beef.
It looks weird.
No, brown turkey. Yeah, it's a weird texture.
And the health benefit is not enough. I've researched twice.
The health benefit is not enough.
It's like a wrong.
That's why I went back to ground beef.
I missed that part.
What is?
I was kidding.
Oh, yeah. I thought you said show and I was like, are we on a show?
I missed that too, but I was excited.
I know, I'll be on the show. And I heard he was me.
I am totally good at that.
I've never had, I've never had a folder with this many tabs in it. This is like a.
Especially if you're talking about.
Have you ever had? That's why she was in the back.
Yeah.
Taco breads.
Well, you're, you're more conservative than I am because I had taco bake tonight.
Wait, what? Taco bake?
It's like a taco casserole. Just like right now, you're just having a number of them lying around.
Up here.
Okay, there it goes.
Two more minutes.
Wow, everybody's early, huh?
Who's excited? Who isn't excited? Top pleasure.
There you go.
He read the.
There we go.
Sometimes you gotta meet him with a.
Oh, did they? Sorry.
Awesome. Thanks.
Yeah, that was, that was awesome.
Probably all the games.
Camille, I'm sitting right here.
You're giving like.
Do you want to be like this man?
He didn't read poetry when he was there.
And look where he is now.
Asking budget questions.
You don't want to be like him. Sad pathetic excuse someone.
Dave, I'll give you some poetry.
Guys, you got one minute.
All right. We're good, we're good.
Awesome.
What's, what are the theater kids do?
I used to do one.
Red leather, yellow leather.
All right. Chris, do I have to do the on-on?
Yep.
I swear I'll, I'll figure it out someday.
Can you collapse the chat?
All right. Time being seven o'clock, I call to order the March eighth, two thousand and two Franklin School Committee meeting. Meetings are recorded by Franklin TV and shown on Comcast Channel eleven and Verizon Channel twenty-nine, as well as recorded by Franklin Matters. Any individual who also wishes to record must notify the chair. At the conclusion of our regular business meeting, we will be adjourning to executive session and we will not be returning to open meeting. All right, so we're going to move to our pledge student. All right, we proudly introduce Kinsley Johnson as tonight's Keller kid who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Kinsley is a second grader at Keller in Mrs. Ald's class. Kinsley demonstrates Keller's core values in the following ways. Kinsley is caring and inclusive. She is supportive of all students and is a peer model in this respect. Kinsley believes Keller's core value of caring is most important. She wants everyone to care for each other. Kinsley demonstrates intelligence by working hard and having a growth mindset. Kinsley likes reading books from the series Who Would Win? Jerry Palata is the author of this series and recently visited Keller. Kinsley has a strong connection to her community and family, too. Outside of school, Kinsley plays hockey, soccer, and basketball. She also enjoys skiing. Kinsley's brother is in first grade. Together with her parents, we are so proud of her. So if we could all stand. And Kinsley is going to go ahead and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If you wanted to start it off, Kinsley?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which is founded, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Kinsley. Enjoy your ice cream. I know. Go get some peppermint ice cream. Okay, next, a moment of silence. As is customary, we will pause for a moment of silence. This evening, we would like to recognize Dr. Kevin O'Malley, the former chair of the Franklin School Committee. Dr. O'Malley spent his career educating and helping others. During his time, he served as vice principal here in Franklin. Later as head of school of the Franklin Charter School and after retirement, chair of the Franklin School Committee. His strength, witty humor, and larger-than-life presence will be missed.
Mike to you guys, he's with Kid Lives Matter.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda. Routine business review of agenda. I, in reviewing the agenda, I'm going to ask if we could move section four discussion-only items. FY twenty-three budget discussion to follow. Section two, the presentation of the superintendent's recommended budget. Um, is there a motion?
Someone.
A second?
Second.
Vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we will move that. Next, we have citizens' comments. Are there any citizens in the audience, in person or online, who would like to make a comment on an item not on tonight's agenda? Anyone online, Lucas? Give it a minute. Okay.
No.
All right. Uh, moving right along. Student representative comments. I don't think we have any student reps.
I can imagine they might be at some of our playoff games this evening or some other events.
Yeah, there's a basketball tonight.
Two, two basketball, hockey.
Oh, wow.
And concert. Yes, there's a concert tonight, too.
Okay, all right.
Four choices.
So Dr. Hearn, it's up to you, super tense report.
I will try to cover some things for the high school, but I'm not gonna do it justice. Um, I have several things for the committee this evening, I think in part because we haven't met in a month. Um, although we did have February break and I hope everybody had a restful week away from school. Um, there have been a number of announcements lately regarding administrative positions. And so I just wanted to update the committee and the community on some of the vacancies and the plans for filling those administrative vacancies. Um, I recently announced that Dr. Linda Ashley is being appointed to be the director of curriculum for ELA and social studies on a more permanent basis. She had been serving in the role as an interim this year. Um, and had some really nice feedback from our curriculum leadership and fellow administrators. And so that appointment has been made and announced, which opens up the door to then fill the Kennedy principal position on a more permanent basis. Um, we have an interim, Dr. Connolly, filling that role. And so at this point, I'm gathering feedback on, on stakeholder input from some parents and from faculty and staff related to the Kennedy principal. We are, um, excuse me. We are currently in the process of searching for a diversity, equity, and inclusion director. Um, so that is underway. The posting closes tomorrow. An interview team is being put together by Paul Morano and Lisa Trainer, and interviews are beginning next week. Um, we have an athletic director vacancy open and that is underway. An interview team met with selected candidates after the paper screening. And some finalists are being identified for a second round of interviews. Uh, the second round of interviews will occur in a couple of weeks where these finalists can meet with student athletes, staff and coaches. Uh, a few central office leaders like me and Ms. Goodman, the school business administrator. Uh, parents and community members. Um, they'll be conducting reference checking as well before a finalist is announced related to an appointment. Um, you know that, um, the Jefferson principal, um, has announced she will be departing and we will, um, be sad to see her go. Um, a posting has been approved and will be up soon so that we can develop a pool of candidates for, uh, for that position. And of course, through the process, we do include and involve stakeholders, including, um, families, faculty and staff, and students and other administrators in the district. Um, we'll be looking to fill the lifelong learning director on a permanent basis. That was an interim after last summer. Um, Kennedy's assistant principal is serving in an interim capacity given Dr. Ashley's moving into central office. Um, and the Jefferson assistant principal, um, was recently announced and we would look to fill that following. Um, a successful candidate for the principal position at Jefferson Elementary. Um, so of course, we're taking great care to fill these administrative roles. And I guess I would just say many of them are interim because we had some folks leave for, um, retirement or personal reasons last summer. Uh, and similarly, again, this year, um, we have some retirements and some personal choices that individuals are making. So as we do every year, um, we prioritize, uh, these appointments, particularly at this time of year. And so, um, I will be, um, you know, working with the, with the team on these searches. And, um, I think Franklin's a great district and look forward to continuing with these processes and having candidates, um, filling them and joining the admin team. I, um, want to, uh, to note, uh, some positive things going on for students in the district. Um, we're so appreciative of three Franklin High School students who've been visiting the Jefferson Elementary School. Uh, they spent two afternoons recently assisting fifth grade classes, painting murals in the hallways, which is a tradition over there. Um, and there is also a high school student creating a video for the Jefferson reading program. Um, I thought it'd be nice to highlight some of the ways that students are connecting with younger kids in our schools and serving as great role models. I did learn, uh, just as we went on air this evening, uh, that the Franklin High School Girls Basketball Team won their playoff game this evening against Lincoln Sudbury with a score of sixty to twenty-three, uh, advancing to the next round, the round of eight in the playoffs. So congratulations to, uh, our basketball team. Um, we have had a huge moment for the Franklin Unified Community um, as we kicked off unified basketball at all three middle schools. Um, was it today, the first day?
Today was first day of practice.
Um, so we are piloting, uh, two teams in a short, uh, four or five-week, uh, season this spring, um, building upon the success of our unified program at, uh, Franklin High School. The Special Olympics has expanded, uh, to the middle levels. Uh, one of the teams, um, practices at Remington and one of the teams practices at Annie Sullivan. And athletes and peers from Horace Mann join both of those teams to participate, uh, in those schools. Uh, today, uh, they all came together, uh, to kick off, uh, for an afternoon of learning about unified basketball, team building, and fun. Uh, according to the very amazing Lisa Berger, uh, who is one of our faculty members and a coach, a unified coach at the high school, uh, and has been a huge help in organizing this and getting it off the ground. Uh, the afternoon was filled with teamwork, smiles, cheering, and fun. I also want to make sure we, uh, give a thanks to our principals, Lizzie Morris and Becky Madi and Craig Williams for their contribution and the coaches, Kristen DiSimone, Leslie Differ, Michelle Leach, and Deirdre Dixon. There's pictures. I'm hoping it's up on Twitter soon. Um, we have some music concerts this week. Um, I personally had the pleasure to see our sixth grade band at Horace Mann rehearsing last week for the All-Town Music Concerts. Uh, the concerts feature ensembles from all three middle schools and Franklin High School and are being held in advance of the MICA Festival, which is April second. Uh, tonight at six o'clock was the All-Town Choir and Orchestra. And tomorrow night at six o'clock, uh, at Franklin High School will be the All-Town Dance Concert. And it is so nice to see the return of these events. Best wishes, best wishes to all. Um, I just thought that I would take a moment. We don't have a COVID update on the agenda. Um, as we had talked about at one of our last meetings, many of the metrics that we had been following are becoming either, um, kind of static. Uh, if we're talking about vaccine information or increasingly irrelevant as it relates to what we had been tracking for case counts and percent positivity. Um, but I did want to just note, uh, because it's been on my mind, uh, to give the committee a little bit of, um, I think it's feedback on how things are going with masks being optional, uh, since the twenty-eighth. Um, we, uh, returned to school on the twenty-eighth with masks being optional in the buildings and on our buses. Um, talking to the principals, um, last week, participation is varying by building. Um, but approximately twenty percent to fifty percent of individuals in certain buildings are, uh, choosing to wear a mask. And so those are some of the numbers that we have. Um, I think we appreciate, uh, communicating, uh, with a little less, uh, frequency. Um, we had fourteen cases last Wednesday and we're reporting on Wednesdays. That's the day that we report to the Department of Education. So it, uh, has really streamlined our communications. Um, and another report will be out tomorrow. Lastly, I want to congratulate, uh, music teacher, Ms. Mary McMurray. Uh, Ms. McMurray was awarded three thousand and three hundred dollars, uh, in a grant from the Massachusetts Cultural Council and Franklin Cultural District Partners Grant. The grant will be used for teaching our elementary students traditional West African music and culture, um, broadening their understanding of music from around the world. And this will be done through a Maya dance and drum. Um, and there will also be a participating performance by that group at, uh, the Art Walk, which I believe is in June. And so we also want to big, give a big thank you to the Franklin Cultural District and Massachusetts Cultural Council. So, glad things are happening and was really pleased to share all that. I'm sure there's more.
Um, questions, comments? Camille? Dave?
Um, thank you very much for, for all those updates. And I have, um, one question about the, uh, Jefferson. Just, is there like a timeline for when, select the Jefferson community might be able to start to kind of know when they're gonna have, uh, principal? And then also like the AP as well?
Yeah, so, um, we're gonna get the principal search up and running, um, right away. I would say we'll have it, we haven't mapped out or fleshed out the exact timeframe of, uh, the search process. Um, but the posting will go up. It'll be up for a couple of weeks. Um, I anticipate, given where April vacation falls, we can probably hold the first round of interviews before April break. And then after April break, uh, return for some site visits, uh, with successful candidates. That's a little off the cuff.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Al?
Uh, no questions.
Dave?
I just want to say, yeah, thank you for all these updates. You'll certainly be very busy filling all these, uh, all these positions. So thank you for all your hard work there. Um, I think this, uh, this program with the FHS students, so visiting Jefferson Elementary and being, uh, peer mentors there. I think that's a wonderful opportunity and, um, I'm very excited to hear that the Franklin United, uh, program is also expanding. So, or unified, my apologies, um, is expanding. Um, that's, uh, yeah, you know, it just makes me very happy to hear that, um, more opportunities in that regard, um, are being offered. So, thank you.
No questions. Thanks for the update. Megan?
No questions. Thank you, too.
Um, I just wanted to, with a little update, I know that we had approved the cheerleaders, the Franklin High Cheerleaders going down to Nationals. Uh, my son and I went to their competition this past Sunday and it was amazing. And they're now the Division One South Regional Champions. The, their performance was just chilling. Uh, I was in tears. It was so amazing. So just send good thoughts to them as they go to Nationals.
All right, Dr. Hearn, we are up for your FY twenty-three superintendent's recommended budget.
Great, thank you. Um, Ms. Goodman and I are gonna relocate, um, to run the slide presentation from there.
Of course.
Uh, all right, let's switch over to Franklin. Let's see what's going on over there. Uh, so Kyle, uh, any updates from Franklin?
Um, I'm not.
Uh, for some reason, Kyle, I can't hear you. I don't know why.
Can you hear me now? Okay, hold on. How about now?
Oh, thank you. Um, Miriam, uh, Goodman is our school business administrator, as you know. I don't have a microphone.
Not particularly on the.
Is that? I said Lucas doesn't need one. We'll just share it. Um. Miriam Goodman is here presenting with me, um, and has done tremendous work, um, all the time related to our finances. Um, but most notably, I would say, since about December, um, preparing, uh, the budget, uh, to present to you tonight. Um, just to sort of set the stage for the community. Um, this is the superintendent's recommended budget after hearing, uh, the wishes and priorities that the school committee, uh, put forward in a workshop, uh, as well as, uh, listening to the requests from, uh, principals and other central office administrators and trying to fit all the pieces together. Um, so from here, um, and there's a slide that outlines, uh, future opportunities. There's an iterative process to develop the final school committee budget, um, which ultimately, um, will be asking for your vote on April twelfth. So this is the first of three opportunities for a budget discussion prior to that vote. As with all of our budgets, um, we frame it around, um, our portrait of a graduate and the skills that we're striving to instill in students as they make their way pre-K through, uh, grade twelve or beyond for the students who remain with us in our transition program. Um, I would also say, um, that this message, uh, is gonna be one that continues, which is one of planning for continued pandemic recovery. Um, we're not going to, uh, recover learning loss. We are not going to attend to student social and emotional needs in one year. Uh, it is going to take time and so, um, we continue to prioritize through operating funds and federal grant funding, social, emotional supports, academic interventions. Um, a small amount of health and safety practices, I think we need to be planning for, uh, hopefully less, uh, unless, as time goes on. Um, but being mindful of that and, um, continued support of technology integration. That really has kind of transformed how we, we, how we teach. We also prioritize and recognize, uh, the growing needs within our student body. Uh, and this has been a message for some time. So despite overall student enrollment decreasing, and we have some numbers to share with you there. Uh, we are seeing, uh, as we had predicted several years back, uh, more intensive needs by students. Um, that includes those that are receiving special education services. And also, um, we have more English learners, uh, than we have had in the past. And so, um, we have some needs to boost and bolster their English language proficiency. Um, we are seeing an increase in the number of students with limited or interrupted formal education, which is a specific term that the Department of Education uses. Um, and, uh, earlier language proficiency is level one, level two. Um, and so you'll see the budget, um, kind of addressing or proposing to address that through, uh, through some personnel. We do also ground all of this in our four, uh, district-wide goals. The budget process to date, um, if we rewind back to December, we had a budget workshop on December fourteenth, after which the budget subcommittee met, uh, on December sixteenth, um, for some initial discussion related to this, uh, fiscal year's FY twenty-three's budget. Uh, between January and February, um, the central office team and principals worked with Miriam and myself, um, in budget development meetings. Uh, we also have regular communications with the town administrator and the, um, business finance staff here, uh, on the second floor. Um, I think we do really appreciate the collaboration and, um, kind of being physical. I miss being in a school, to be get out as much as possible, um, but being physically co-located, um, in suites that neighbor each other, both on the third floor and then here on the second floor, does really help to promote that, uh, communication between, uh, between the offices. On February seventeenth, um, the budget subcommittee met, um, and saw a first pass high-level overview of the, um, superintendent's recommended budget, asked some great questions and provided, uh, an initial round of feedback. And here we are, um, presenting the recommended budget for FY twenty-three.
Okay, cool.
In previous, uh, presentations, we've kind of left out the nuts and bolts of school funding until the budget hearing. Um, but in advance of the, uh, joint budget subcommittee meeting on Thursday with March tenth, we thought that, um, that we would share some of this foundational information now. Um, and it is a little complicated, uh, and I don't mean to sound fanatic when I say that. But I think it bears repeating, uh, in terms of how these pieces go together, uh, to, to get to our, um, state and local funding. So I'm gonna turn it over to Miriam to share more about that.
Great, thanks, and thank you for having me here tonight, um, and everyone. Uh, so. So, uh, chapter seventy is the funding formula, is the law that identifies the funding formula for districts across the state. And, um, the funding is determined in three basic steps. So I'm gonna break it down because it is a very complex formula. So in those three basic steps, you're looking at the foundation budget, which is what the state determines is adequate to provide an education for the students in the district. Uh, it determines how much, the state determines how much the district can, um, we, uh, afford to contribute towards that. And then it backfills that with state aid. So, um, relative to the foundation budget, the first step is that determination of what that is. And there are three factors that go into what the, uh, the total foundation budget will be. And those three factors are the enrollment, which in Franklin is going down, as you know. Uh, a wage adjustment factor, which is based on the region, um, that the district is in throughout the state. And there are different factors, um, based on that region. And the inflation factor, which this year is capped at four and a half percent, which is the maximum according to law, I believe. And as we know, uh, inflation is a little higher than that at this point. Um, this foundation budget this year also, um, reflects the second year of the Student Opportunity Act implementation, uh, based on the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Committee. Uh, and in FY twenty-three, the foundation budget for Franklin per student is twelve thousand fifty-eight dollars. That's up about eight hundred dollars since last year, this time preliminarily. Um, so, uh, and a good portion of that is because the rates of the foundation budget are up due to the Student Opportunity Act. Uh, and, and unfortunately, enrollment being down. So, so that once they've determined the foundation budget and how much the, how much is adequate to provide for our students, then they determine how much Franklin can afford to pay towards that amount. That local contribution is, um, comprised of three factors, um, property wealth, local, uh, effort from income, and a miserable revenue growth factor. Um, all three kind of complicated to come into play here. But, um, you'll see that our local required contribution, uh, is going up as well as our foundation going up. Um, our foundation, our local contribution as a, as a percentage of our foundation budget right now is, uh, seventy-one percent. So the state wants us to contribute seventy-one percent towards what they consider is an adequate amount to educate the students in Franklin. Um, this amount will cap at eighty-two and a half percent because you can see it's going up steadily. Uh, anticipated that will happen probably in the next six years or so. Um, so once they've determined the foundation budget and they've determined how much Franklin can afford to pay towards that foundation budget, now they're gonna backfill the difference with state aid. Um, some districts are foundation aid districts. We're not one of those. That would basically be the difference between foundation and required contribution equals foundation aid. We're a minimum aid district, which means we're getting more than what the state calculates. And so we're only going to get thirty dollars a head more than what we're already getting. Um, and so what you'll see is the, the Student Opportunity Act, um, that the impact to Franklin is not as beneficial as, um, it might be to other communities. But the pieces that will impact Franklin are the additional circuit breaker money that we're gonna get for transfer, uh, reimbursement for transportation in addition to tuition. Um, some charter school reimbursement, which comes through the town off the cherry sheet and doesn't impact this budget. And, um, an increase to the required local contribution, which is where you're going to see the biggest impact. Because as. Because as the foundation budget goes up, the required contribution is going to go up as well because the state's already contributing more than they should be contributing to Franklin. And that's as a result of our high enrollment in the 90s when ed reform came into play. So we're already getting $11 million more than we should be getting in aid to the district. We are second in the state, only to Boston, who's getting $33 million more. So they're holding harmless our state aid money, i.e. they're not going to give us any less Chapter 70 money. But they're not going to give us any more than $30 per pupil, which equates to about $150,000. It's her favorite slide.
This is my favorite slide. Because in numbers, it really tells a story. And the story, and it captures in a slightly different way all that Miriam just shared about how the state and local contributions work together. So the first line addresses enrollment, and enrollment is based on October 1 of the previous year. And the enrollment is decreasing by 2% roughly. And I just want to pause for a second and note that our enrollment is going down as a result of having a big boom in births that through, for natural reasons, the birth rates are down and the census is down in terms of young children. It is not, you know, people fleeing the district for other choices. This is really a matter of graduating 400, 450 students in recent years and bringing in classes of about 300. So at that rate, you know, we've been turning over, I think in the last decade, it's been about 20% of the student population. We are projected to kind of level off at the elementary level. We do anticipate a decrease over the next couple of years of our enrollment at the middle and then at the high school. So district-wide, this trend will continue. And that forecast was done as part of a pre-pandemic look through the McKibben Report. It has been very, very helpful for our planning purposes. And we're keeping close tabs, though, because, you know, the pandemic may have thrown off some things. We did see some unexpected movement last spring with home sales. So some of the elementary schools saw kind of an unexpected or unforecasted increase because those districts had a more sizable number of home sales. We did also see one of the schools see a really unexpected decrease last year. And I think, I'm not sure that we're going to see a lot of home sale movement. If interest rates go up, you know, I don't anticipate it necessarily being as healthy of a market for movement. So we're going to keep close eyes on enrollment, though, throughout the spring and into the summer. But it has decreased from FY22 to FY23 by 2%. At the same time, the foundation budget, so what the state is determining to be an adequate education for children in Franklin is increasing by four and a half percent. That is as a result of it costing more to educate students from low-income backgrounds, English learners, special education. It also factors in healthcare insurance increases. Those were the four things that the Student Opportunity Act took into account. So the foundation budget is increasing by four and a half percent. As a result of the formula and analysis related to median income and property wealth, the required local contribution is going up 5.55%. Chapter 78, as Miriam said, for us is a minimum aid district, is about a $150,000 increase or $30 additional money, more money per pupil for an increase of 0.5%. And if you subtract, where's the 11 million? If you subtract the.
The foundation.
Foundation budget.
Minus the required district contribution.
Minus the required district.
So, so the 11 million plays out because you are taking the foundation budget less the required district contribution. And if we were a foundation aid district, that would be close to 17.6 million. So you're taking that 62.4 million on this slide and you're subtracting out the 44.8 million. That equals 17.6, which is what should be our Chapter 70 funding. But if you'll notice what our Chapter 70 aid up there is, it's $28.7 million. The difference between that is the $11 million in excess base aid. That's where that 11 million comes from. And then when you add to that, the Chapter 70 aid and the required local contribution, those two numbers comprise the district's net school spending, which is what we're required to spend to comply with the law. In a foundation aid district, it's going to equal the foundation budget. But in a district like Franklin, it's going to exceed the foundation budget because we're exceeding our Chapter 78 by $11 million.
A little bit more about net school spending is on the next slide.
Sure. So in 2020, you can build the whole thing. The, as I said, that's the minimum amount that we need to spend to comply with the law. That's net school spending. In 2020, Franklin spent about $7.6 million more than we were required to spend. And by some coincidence, that happens to be, coincidentally, 11.2% more than what is required. However, it still puts us in the 22nd percentile statewide. Restated 78% of districts in Massachusetts spend more than required over net school spending. And on average, they spend about 25% more than required net school spending. So this is one data point that is often used to compare us to other districts. Some nearby districts, for example, Ashland spends 27.6% more than net school spending. Holliston spends 33.9% more, Walpole is at 38.6, Fellingham is at 38%. Those are just some comparison points. We're at 11% more. One thing I'll add about net school spending is that, and you'll see shortly, if you notice, our net school spending amount was $73.5 million. And you'll hear very shortly that the superintendent's recommended budget is $70 million, 70.2 million. There are expenses in the superintendent's budget that do not count towards net school spending. Transportation, for example, Medicaid billing costs, crossing guards. Those things don't count towards net school spending. But there are other things outside of the district's budget that are included in the town's budget that do count towards net school spending. Custodial salaries, maintenance, building utilities, things like that, that the town spends on behalf of education, on behalf of the district for education. Those things do count toward net school spending. So as a whole, the town contributes probably plus, more than $15 million towards education for all of those expenses. And that is how we, between our budget and the town budget contribution, that's how we are in excess by $7.6 million.
And for context setting again, because we do have a meeting of the Joint Budget Subcommittee on Thursday, the 10th, also wanted to include another comparison to the net school spending is also per pupil comparison. And the per pupil comparison to the state average is listed here. We continue to be around the 25th percentile in per pupil throughout the state. Or another way, 75% of districts in Massachusetts spend more per pupil. And the percent difference is listed for you there for in-district expenditure, total per pupil expenditure, which includes what we call out-of-district expenditure, which also includes like charter spending, so it's not strictly just Franklin Public Schools, is the bottom line. And then just for comparison sake, over time, we took a look at, we took a look at spending over the past five years for the district and for the state. The state was seeing an increase in pupils between 2016 and 2018. But Massachusetts is also now seeing a decrease in the number of students statewide. So that trend that we've been experiencing is one that many other districts are experiencing and now the state as a whole is. And our per pupil expenditure has gone up over time, as has in the state. The state's spending percentage has gone up higher in a higher percentage rate than ours. But I do just add that caveat that there were some additional students statewide, which impacts how those numbers, how those numbers go.
And that's the six-year summary.
And that's the six-year summary with Franklin's increase of 9.7% in five years and the state average increase in in-district expenditure at nearly double that. So building the budget, now that we have a context of kind of our revenue sources being state monies as well as local contribution, Miriam works to put together some initial budget assumptions from then we build.
Yeah, so we anticipate an increase from the town. We don't quite know what that is yet. We have kind of a general sense, but we won't know that for a few weeks yet, at least. We are still waiting to have a health insurance rate. We don't have a renewal at this point in time. We do have an estimate of seven, sorry, 8%. Trends are roughly seven to eight percent. So that's where that number comes from. When the renewal comes in, the Insurance Advisory Council will meet, discuss it, and determine what our next steps might be based on that renewal amount. Our out-of-district tuition rates are going up. We anticipate a rate increase of 5%. Some placements go up more than that. Some might be less than that. We don't always know that at this point in time, but over the course of the placements, we anticipate a 5% overall. Our out-of-district budget, you'll see, is in the end going down, but the rate increases are budgeted at 5% based on the students that we have and their placements. Our transportation rates are going up. We have a new contract with our big yellow bus provider, which is bringing our rates up 4%. We do have fewer buses that we're running right now. But overall, the rate is going up. And we are using an increased amount of revolving funds to the tune of roughly 10% and $515,000, which also supports this budget. And then just a summary of the budget, total superintendent's recommended budget of $70,216,996 represents a two-point, just under $4 million, just under $2.4 million increase. Largest driver being what we anticipate to be waging increases in compensation due to collective bargaining agreements and contractual obligations. We also see an increase of $93,000 in healthcare costs. Health and Medicare are at a district tuition budget, as I said earlier. The rates are going on 5%, but the tuition overall is going down. That's a function of being able to prepay some tuition this year and increasing the amount of the circuit breaker offset. Anticipate getting an additional $335,000 in circuit breaker funds this year that we will be applying to next year. So that overall is about 3.1 million in circuit breaker funds applied for next year. And then we have other expenses and transportation going up as well, about $160,000, $70,000 overall. So basically, the superintendent's budget is going up 3.53% over fiscal year '22. Salaries and healthcare costs approximate 87% of this budget. Out-of-district tuition is about 5%, other expenses at 4.3% and transportation at 3.5%.
So for this budget, we have some investments that we're proposing to be included. And they are broken out by level. The elementary is listed here. We are proposing the addition of a literacy specialist, which would make a second literacy specialist at Keller. When students from Davis Thayer, we were redistricted to Keller, we strategically asked the committee to support two math specialists, and we had one literacy specialist. We took a very, very careful look at personnel. And many personnel moved from the Davis Thayer School to the Keller Elementary School to support students, including kind of nursing support, special education, classroom teachers. But knowing that we had, we brought a second math specialist, but we left just one literacy specialist. And I think it's important to note that Keller has 547 students in comparison to 350, 360 at some of our other elementary schools. And given, you know, given what their, what their needs are and what they're doing to support, one of the most important things, if not the most important thing, an elementary school does is teach reading. We're really strongly advocating for an additional literacy specialist to support the curriculum, to support the teachers, to support students with services, to coach teachers, and to work with the administrative team in terms of supporting that literacy development. We have recently introduced a new math program in this year with kind of an initial implementation, gathering feedback on that math, continuing to support educators with the second math literacy specialist in math. But we really feel very strongly that the literacy specialist is just as important and would advocate adding a staff member budgeted at $75,000 to support that. We do anticipate from a curriculum standpoint that our attention will turn as part of a regular curriculum review cycle to ELA first and foremost. In recent years, we've been kind of reactive more to state changes to the curriculum and are now positioned to have a more proactive curriculum review. And ELA is an area that really, that hasn't been reviewed, I think, since the new standards were put in place very much. And is really in need of that. So for lots of reasons, we're advocating for the inclusion of a second literacy specialist at Keller. As I had noted, we're seeing an increase in our English language learning population at all levels. And so you'll see additional English learning teachers throughout the district based on the projected student enrollment, the projected numbers, as well as language proficiencies. And so we're proposing an additional English language learning teacher at Keller. And then at the Oak Horse Man Building, we have one ESL teacher supporting the students in that complex. And we, which is a lot, and we're asking for an additional support in the form of an ESP. We've had some good support and good experience with that at the high school. We currently have one ESL teacher and one EL ESP at the high school. And that has been, we feel like that has provided some flexibility in terms of supporting students. We also, when we have our EL teachers out, the ESP could help provide some support as a floating sub so that students continue to get their language development services. We've taken a close look at special education and the caseloads of our special education liaisons. And the Director of Student Services is advocating for an additional special educator at the Kennedy Elementary School. And then we are also asking for the school committee to support a Wilson Language teacher at the elementary level based on IEPs and student needs. The Wilson Language program is a very scripted program. It is very specific and tailored towards a particular group of students who need that language support in terms of developing their reading. group of students who need that, that language support in terms of developing their reading. And we have an increased need for that. Some of our special educators are Wilson certified. And so, so they do that service directly. But we do have a more specific need to provide that, that specialized instruction. At the middle level, one of, I think, one of my, one of the, you're seeing me smile. One of the things that I've appreciated so much in, in being here in Franklin, and this was one of the first things that I had a hand in developing at the time, was the introduction of the NECC Children Partner Program, which is a collaboration with NECC. We have ABA tutors that we hire who are on staff. And then we pay a contract fee to NECC for the teacher. And we started that program at Parmentor. It actually started as part of a Senate-funded earmark. Senate President Spilka provided the earmark to get the program up and running, which was really a very, which was a wonderful kind of investment. Because ultimately what it allowed for was the establishment of this program to then, based on that investment from, from Senate funds, keeping students in district, which I think has enriched the, the schools in which the students attend. But it is also a more cost-effective means and of providing the services. And so here we are, the NECC Partner Program, the children are growing, growing up. We've expanded the program to another classroom at Kennedy in recent years. And now the students will be going on to sixth grade. And so this is to support the ABA support as well as the contracted services through NECC at one of the middle schools. I think the location is to be determined based on space and services being provided. Additionally, we have English language learning, an additional English language learning teacher to support the Remington and Annie Sullivan Middle Schools being proposed in this budget based on numbers. I'm going to skip that fourth, that fourth line for a second. And while we're talking about things related to student services, we are also proposing an additional goals teacher. Goals is also a program that supports students on the autism spectrum, but with a slightly different profile than the students and slightly different needs than the students in the NECC program. And that program is expanding. And so we propose an additional goals teacher, which is at the Remington Middle School. We have a request that I support wholeheartedly from our curriculum directors for an additional level of a teacher leader, which would be teacher curriculum leaders at the middle level. A kind of complimentary to the directors that we have, one in ELA and Social Studies and one in Math and Science. The teacher curriculum leaders would be relieved of teaching duties. So these would be full-time curriculum support personnel. And they would be working with our educators in terms of writing a guaranteed and viable curriculum that would be consistent and coherent across all three middle schools, as well as doing some instructional coaching. We do have some new materials that we are anticipating for implementation or have recently been implemented in the middle school, including discovery education for social studies. And our STEM scope subscription is up, so they're currently evaluating some new science materials. And I think that these teacher curriculum leaders would really be very high leverage in terms of job embedded professional development and curriculum writing. Again, they would be shared across all three middle schools. They would not have teaching responsibilities. And I think they also serve a little bit of that intermediary between kind of the administration and our classroom educators. So for example, we have principals and assistant principals at the elementary level. And they work in partnership with teacher leaders, their math and literacy curriculum specialists. At the high school level, we have department heads serving something of that role. But at the middle level, right now, we have stipends for teachers in each building, but they're teaching full time. And so they do a wonderful job, they, they do a tremendous job. So this is not at all, you know, a critique of that. But in terms of kind of structurally supporting kind of that depth, the depth of support across the middle level, I think some full-time staff would be strongly advocated for.
Just to clarify, that number reflects to FTE.
High school, again, we're seeing a, a pretty large increase in terms of our English language learning population. And so I want to say it's going to be, I didn't bring the numbers with me, but it's in the low twenties in terms of the number of students, which is across four grades and all of the classes. That big matrix and puzzle of the high school, the high school schedule. So we're proposing an additional English language learning teacher at the high school. This is something that had previously, previously been discussed with the former school committee last summer. And they were supportive of restoring the art director, which is actually a point six restoration because it's just a, a rethinking of the, the classroom sections that we, that we retained. So it's really a point six addition, which is why it's sixty five thousand. We did a search at the beginning, like last summer, towards the beginning of the school year and did not find a successful candidate. So we left the position vacant this year. But we would strongly advocate to restore the art director. And this would be doing it formally through, through the budget. We have a request for an additional REACH teacher and REACH ESP. REACH is a K to twelve specialized program that supports students with emotional and behavioral needs. And the numbers there are increasing. So we are proposing an expansion of a teacher and an ESP. Given the caseload and the number of students in a sixteen hundred and fifty person student body high school, I think there's over two hundred students on IEPs, but only one team chair, we're proposing an additional point five team chair at the high school. We do have an assistant principal at the high school whose predominant area of focus or responsibility has been student services and specialized programs. But that is a different role than team chair. She's supervising and evaluating educators. She provides tremendous support and has been kind of intentionally focusing on the support of our specialized programs. And so it's, it's still not enough, particularly as we went from a six-person administrative team at Franklin High School to a five-person administrative team that student services position, I think, has been doing a lot more assistant principal type work, a more administrative lens. And we really do need more team chair, which is, which is a different role to help, to help support the, the special education process and the students. And then our STRIVE program, another K to twelve program at the high school, will have more students in it next year. And so the Office of Student Services and I are looking for support for two additional paraprofessionals or ESPs. And then district wide, in the capital plan, we have requested an additional van. The capital plan is going to Town Council on March sixteenth for full approval, but has passed through the Subcommittee and the Finance Committee. So we would need a van driver to support that additional van. And then we are asking for support for an academic tutor. This academic tutor would work with students in our transition program. So there are a number of students who continue on with us after their senior year, based on their learning needs. And they're not quite ready to, to, to move on to school and college yet independently. But we do have a, a special program through Bridgewater State that they can attend. And the academic tutor helps to support their transition to post-secondary education. So all told, the investment initiatives total one point two million. And I think there really is a, a big theme here in terms of the, the level of student needs being, being supported. The school committee did ask us to look at some priorities. And we have had some administrative discussions and have given them careful consideration. And they kind of, a couple of these fall into some similar categories. So as an administrative team, we considered how we might be able to introduce world language teachers at the elementary level. I think it's certainly been a, been a priority or a goal of mine. And I know that you and previous committees have been interested in this. And then the K to eight library director is something that I think really merits further conversation and discussion. The K to eight libraries are, I think they're staffed with some really excellent paraprofessionals that we really appreciate the work that they do. But they are not kind of trained librarians. The collections are getting outdated, need to be culled. We have kind of a workaround, I suppose, which is the expansion of classroom libraries. And the, but the literacy specialists have done a tremendous job at building bookrooms. But we really don't have, you know, true library, true, true library staff, except at the high school. And it just seems very incongruous for, for a town like Franklin. That being said, in terms of implementation, we would like to propose a little more time to be thoughtful and thinking about how this all comes together in terms of the elementary schedule. It's not a simple addition to make because the scheduling is, is pretty complicated. So, and we would want to do it in a way that involves the teachers who might be impacted, including the other specialist teachers, for example. So would suggest a study committee next year to make recommendations for FY twenty four. And then there were a number of items, again, wanted to make sure you know, we went back to your list repeatedly. There were a number of items that you talked about. I think some of them are kind of contractually related and we are in negotiations with the FDA at this time. We do have a placeholder in the budget, I think Miriam is going to talk about it.
Okay. Okay.
We do have a placeholder in the budget, just to kind of estimate some reductions, which we do every year. Kind of traditionally based on our enrollment, as well as other things that may come up between now and the adoption of the budget or even there is some fluidity and flexibility. As you know, you've seen some transfers and things of that nature. But in terms of, in terms of our enrollment, taking a close look at class sizes and the level of staffing that we have. So there may be some budget reductions, which would be absorbed through retirements and resignations. District wide, I think it's early to say where, as I had told you, we were, we're keeping our close eye on enrollments. And we also like to have conversations with individuals who may be impacted by that first. But hopefully, again, it's through attrition, retirements and resignations that allow us to maybe carefully think about which positions we do fill going forward. And so we have a placeholder there regarding that. I think it's, you know, kind of fiscally responsible to demonstrate that we've been keeping up with this over time. And so since FY oh eight, our class sizes have remained relatively consistent. Right now, our elementary average class size is around nineteen point four. And the gray line is the FTEs for classroom educators. And the bars are as the K to five students decline, we've been monitoring that. And similarly, at the middle school, class size is around nineteen and a half. Keeping our eye on class size there as well. High school is a little bit more complicated to demonstrate in a graph. We have not had decreases in enrollment in some time. We're starting to see that happen at the high school. And again, I think it's important when, when our enrollment is decreasing that we consider which positions we are going to fill and not strategically. That being said, and I think this also gets a little bit at some of the priorities you were talking about and asking about as well in the budget workshop. And I think this is consistent with the idea of enrollment goes down, but student needs increase. We have increased some specialized positions in the last five years. So we have increased special educators from eighty one to ninety six point eight as our specialized programs grow in particular. Also perhaps liaisons in different schools. School adjustment counselors have really seen a dramatic increase. And I want to say that we're, from a ratio standpoint, you know, pretty, I think, pretty well positioned in terms of the number of counselors that we have in the district. Based on what the Counseling Association recommends for a student to counselor ratio. So we have proposed kind of a, a flat number between last year and next year for, for school adjustment counselors, at least in the operating budget. But you can see there's been a pretty sizable, and I think justified increase in terms of the number of school adjustment counselors in recent years. We are also continuing to think about that counseling review and think about the roles that people play in different meetings. And then our nursing staff, we're proposing a, a level nursing staff for next year. I think it's, I think it's wise to consider, you know, what may happen with other variants. We, we do also have some pieces related to nursing that, again, student needs are increasing. And so, and those include medical needs. And so we're proposing to keep a flat, not, basically not decrease nurses with the idea that we're on, we're in a different place with the pandemic. I think we should, we're proposing to keep it flat. To help support the budget, we do have one-time revenues in the form of revolving accounts. And Miriam will talk through applying revolving funds in the coming year.
Yeah, so as, as presented, our appropriation budget is requesting a three point five, three percent increase. In addition to the revolving fund offsets, we, of five million, we are adding another five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in revolving funds for this year to be offset, basically increasing our expenses in revolving accounts versus a budget. So we anticipate spending between budget and revolving seventy five point, just under seventy five point eight million dollars. On top of that, we will also spend roughly one and a half to two and a half million dollars in state and federal grants. And that's actually not reflected on this slide. But, but that will also be, be dependent on what grant funding we have remaining at the end of this year. And we're going to get into a little bit of what our grant funding has been in the past years and where we are going with it for next year. So just a, a high level summary. The FY twenty two appropriation was sixty seven point eight million dollars. The FY twenty three superintendent's recommendation, recommended budget is at seventy million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety six dollars. That's an increase of two million, three hundred and ninety six dollars and a hundred, not, two million, three hundred and ninety six thousand, one hundred and seventy two dollars. And that's a three point five, three percent increase.
Thank you.
So just to summarize some of the federal grants that we've seen since the beginning of the pandemic. We did receive some coronavirus relief funds. We were allocated one point one million dollars in FY twenty one. They were fully expended in FY twenty one. We use those for VLA staff, our Virtual Learning Academy, Digital Learning Integrationists. That was the first year those folks came on board. Permanent building subs, technology and tech support, which was much needed at that time. And some tent rentals for mask breaks and materials subscriptions and PPE. Our SR one funding was allocated at a hundred and twenty three thousand, three hundred and, two hundred and thirty five dollars. As of June thirtieth, we had about ninety three thousand dollars left over. We have since fully expended that grant. We use that for elementary interventionists. Our SR two grant has been submitted and is approved at four hundred and seventy five thousand, four hundred and ninety six dollars. And we are And we are well in the midst of using that funding. We are using it to further support our interventionists, to provide funding for counselor, a counselor and counseling, counseling interns. We have an expanded role for our nurse leader due to COVID. And we're also using that funding to support permanent building subs, as well as our summer learning academy that took place last summer. Our SR3 money hasn't been touched yet. It's allocated in, in the amount of one million, forty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars. We are planning to use that, perhaps a portion of it before the end of this year, on the diversity, equity and inclusion director. We also have plans to increase our counseling staff by partnering with the Bright program or implementing the Bright program. Thank you, sorry. Brid for Resilient Youth in Transition, Bright. We are anticipating a counselor and two ESPs in that program and funding that over the next two years, continuing our funding, our funding for interventionists, as well as a social worker and some after-school tutoring at the middle and high school level.
Can I jump in and just add one thing particularly related to SR3? As Miriam noted, we haven't touched it yet, and we would propose using it over the next two years for the positions as outlined in the plan. There may, you may hear things or read about them in the newspaper related to state officials pressuring or pushing or sending a message to districts like, spend your money, spend your money, spend your money. And I think a lot of districts like Franklin are trying to maximize those dollars and, and really leverage them for as long as possible, knowing that the pandemic is going to take a while from which to recover. And so the message that we've been conveying where possible, when talking to legislators or, you know, other, other state officials, has been, it's all planned for. It's not just sitting and languishing. And that may also be something that people are wondering about, you know, in the community around, like, oh, they're just sitting on it. And I think this has all been, you know, very strategic and very purposeful and planful on how to leverage these dollars for the longest amount of time to support that sustained recovery.
We have also received funding through the American Rescue Plan. Our school age allocation is two hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars. We have used some of that. We are anticipating use for the next two years for specialized program teachers, ESPs, some curriculum PD work, program consultation, tutoring for some of our students who are homeschooled, as well as some accessible playground equipment and some other specialized materials. Our American Recovery Act, American Rescue Plan, sorry, funding for early childhood, used that our preschool is in the amount of twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. We've used some of that for occupational therapy services, small amount, some professional development, trauma-informed and multi-tiered systems of support, PD, as well as some early literacy materials and fine motor skill developmental materials. As Dr. Hearn alluded to, we are, we are cautious and planful with the federal funding that we've gotten. As you can see, that funding goes through the end of September, twenty twenty-four. Our SR3 funding goes through the end of twenty twenty-four, and, and we are thoughtful about how we are spending that to avoid a funding cliff. Funding cliff.
So as we near the end of the presentation, just want to kind of recap by sharing some outstanding variables related to this budget. We are still waiting on a final amount or some information related to the town appropriation. But we also, I think, can anticipate or might anticipate, you know, the local revenues are going to be limited based on, based on new growth and, and the revenue forecast here in town. You know, so I think that there is still going to need to be an iterative approach. And I think we'll learn more over the next subsequent weeks, starting with the Joint Budget Subcommittee again on March tenth, where we'll hear, I think, some initial, initial framing and some materials may have, may have already been posted related to that. The state came out with the governor's budget at the end of January, so all of these numbers are based on the governor's budget. The Senate and House budgets will come out later. I think because of the Student Opportunity Act, the Senate and House budgets have been more closely aligned in recent years with the governor's budget. So the sweeping differences that we had seen, rewinding five years ago, where the Senate and the House budgets were sizably different, I wouldn't anticipate there to be sizable differences between the Senate and House budgets. There are some minor ones, but that's just speculation. So we'll wait and see what, what comes there. We have contract negotiations underway, so that is a variable to consider related to the ultimate budget. We may be able to make further budget adjustments. In recent years, at the end of the year, we've been able to look at revolving fund balances and apply a little more additional revolving funds. We do anticipate prepaying some tuition again. I mean, how do we, how do we get to two point four million and three point five percent? This is the smallest increase I've ever presented in my five years of doing budgets in Franklin, and it's partly with the revolving accounts and the prepaying of tuition that we get here. But there may be some reduced expenses related to, related to healthcare and other expenses that we might be able to trim based on actual expenses through the rest of this year. And we just also continue to think ahead, not just for FY23, but for future years. We just need to caution our federal stimulus funds right now, not, not entirely, but that SR3 block in particular is related to personnel. And so really thinking about absorbing those, those roles, provided that they show that return on investment that you might expect, absorbing those roles into the budget, again, with the idea that as enrollment declines, you may have some flexibility with which to do so, based on retirements and resignations that you choose not to, not to fill.
So, sure, sorry. So recommended next steps, we have a joint budget subcommittee scheduled for Thursday evening, March tenth. We have a budget subcommittee meeting, school committee budget subcommittee meeting on March fifteenth. We will bring this budget back to the school committee for a public hearing and a budget discussion, further discussion on March twenty-second. The budget subcommittee will take it back again. Again, as Dr. Hearn said, this is an iterative process, so we have a scheduled budget subcommittee on March twenty-ninth. And then we anticipate bringing it forth to you for a full discussion and vote on April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. And then April and May, once you vote on it, we bring it to the town council, to the finance committee and the town council for them to vote on it as well. And those, we anticipate those meetings to happen in April night. Answer any questions you might have.
Answer any questions or hear your comments. Just to set the stage for the budget hearing, it is at the budget hearing that we go line by line. You're certainly welcome to ask, you know, questions, but that is an opportunity to go line by line. So, but I'm hopeful that we have a little bit of a budget discussion because we are curious about your questions and input.
Just before, I know that Donna Grady had wanted to come. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it. So Beth Atlee, the treasurer of the FBA, she's actually here, and I know that she wanted to say a couple of words, if that's okay with everybody.
It's your meeting as the chair.
Beth, if you wanted to come up.
Hi, I'm the secretary.
Oh.
But thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the membership of the FBA. To the important issue of the budget, as you've just heard Dr. Hearn's presentation, we also, we also support an increase in the budget and wonder if it should be a bigger increase and for different reasons. We've heard about the portrait of the graduate and the strategies for district improvement, both important topics. Over the last few pandemic years, we've seen money spent on needed upgrades for technology and facilities improvements, both good things, things that were necessary, things that were needed. We're asking you to look at how the budget money is spent. We don't need any more assessments or new initiatives to tell us kids our have learned gaps or social trauma. We know this. This is what we do. We need bodies, we need people who are working in front of kids every day, all day. We need counselors, we need ESPs, we need healthcare staff, teachers, guidance, CHS, special educators, specialists, ELL educators, psychologists. Let's increase the budget so that we can support the students and families in Franklin the way that they deserve, directly, thoughtfully and impactfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. All right, so just really quickly, before we open up to the committee, just gonna, I just wanted to make an opening statement. So first, thank you, Dr. Hearn, Miriam, Central Office, Budget Subcommittee for all of your hard work. You've all heard me say this many times before. You'll hear me say it many more times in the future. A budget is a moral document. What we fund is what we value. If we value our students, we need to start funding it like it is. What we stand for, what our values are, our budget reflects our values. When you lay out the budget, the money goes to salaries, insurance, transportation, out-of-district placement. We have no control over that. When you add it all up on this nice little pie chart, that is ninety-five point six percent of our budget, ninety-five point six percent. We have no control over it. When you look at why people come to a community, the majority come for the schools. We need to be competitive and strong when it comes to our budget. Before COVID, we were already struggling to maintain a level service budget. Every year, costs go up, and so every year, we struggled to maintain that level service budget. What do we want our community, our schools, to look like? A budget must reflect that. So I think for our discussion questions, what we'll do is we'll do one at a time and kind of go around, just so it's a little equitable. That's the new buzzword. Camille, oh, I'm sorry, Lady Bernstein, if you wanted to go first.
I don't have any questions right now.
Okay.
But I may in the next round.
That's fine. Dave Callahan?
All right, so one question, actually, talking about one of the last points about the SR funding. And I know very quickly into this new term, Dr. Hearn, I think you and I spoke, and I was really, really kind of applauding what the district was doing to start to allocate those funds and to plan those, those funds, because it's, it's going to be a national issue where all of a sudden, I think September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, is a date that all funds must be spent and, and see the writing on the wall. I'm sure across the nation, obviously, some districts are scrambling in August to spend the rest of the money. So I'm, I'm really glad that we continue to look to the future and to make sure that we're spending, you know, every last dime that the federal government is, is giving to us. And with that, you also alluded to some of the positions that are being funded through the, the SR funding and really would love to, to make sure that we see the, both like quantitative and also quantitative benefits that some of these positions are providing for. Because right now, it's, it's very easy for, I think, for us to say, you know, yes to some of these positions, to fund these positions, because we can just pass that bill right over to the federal government. It's going to be a much different and more complex conversation when it's Franklin taxpayer dollars determining whether or not some of these newfound positions are going to continue to be funded. So I'd love to, if, whatever might be able to come up with some metrics, we can really kind of reevaluate this when that time comes. And it's all in the same subject of SR. Can I continue?
Okay, go ahead. Part B.
What happens on October one, twenty twenty-four? So with this SR funding, it's one point five million, which I think is about like two percent of our overall budget like today. So what's going to happen when, when suddenly we don't have that money? Is that something that we're just going to, you know, we will have to start to make cuts or start to do to revenue sources? It's, it's pretty much once, once this funding goes, a huge chunk, one point five million, we have to try to figure out what, what to do with. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, so once our SR funding is exhausted, we're going to have to make a determination as to whether these particular positions will continue or, and be absorbed into the budget and how we're going to do that. Or whether they will be offset by different positions because of our declining enrollment potentially. So there may be other areas of the budget that might be able to be reduced to be able to absorb some of these positions. And I think that's far, part of our planning over the next two years, to be able to support that so that, no worry, we will spend all this funding by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and, and be able to continue some of these programs based on those metrics that you just talked about in terms of evaluating how effective the, the positions have been and, and whether we're getting a return on our investment.
We have an example, if I can just jump in and elaborate. We have an example of that with the digital learning integrationists. So we initially funded them with the early CBRF coronavirus relief funding, and then in the subsequent budget, they, this year, were put into the operating budget and paid for that way. So we have some examples of how, how, how that would, that would look two years down the road.
Thank you very much with my first set of questions.
Al?
So just first of all, just want to talk about the presentation. I thought that showed just how you crafted the, the messaging and really the thought that was put around that. It's, it's, it's a tough pill to swallow when you are expected to pay more for similar services that you've had. But one thing that I, that jumped out at me was around the, the MAC expansion. And I know that where that's going up, we're looking to spend more money there. Do we know, had we not implemented this program, how much this would have cost us?
I think we do have those numbers. Would you be able to speak to it off the cuff?
I would start with saying that, that, while I can tell you how many students are in the program, but if we were in a position to have to send these students into an out-of-district placement, I would expect that placement to be in the hundred and fifty-ish thousand dollar range plus transportation.
Right.
Yeah, so I think it's definitely, I figured it'd be more than what we're spending now. So I think we just have to also keep in mind, yes, we're spending more, but we're, if we do not take action, we're going to spend even more. So it's, we're, it's how much you want to spend and how well do you want to care for it? So I think that's something to be, be mindful of.
And, and I would speak to the chair's comment about what we value in keeping our students in district and educating them with their neighborhood peers.
And as I shared earlier, I mean, it doesn't only benefit the students with disabilities, but the other students within the school's environment, so.
All right. Dave?
Yes, thank you. Just to say thank you, Dr. Hearn, thank you, Miriam, and thank you to the entire administration team for putting this together. It's like a lot of hard work and your dedication to providing Franklin students with, you know, the best possible educational experience. And not only that, but, you know, targeting the programs and services we're providing to fit their specific needs as apparent through this. So thank you. There's certainly some very eye-opening things here in the presentation, particularly in our increased local contribution requirements over the next few years. And Miriam, you mentioned, we're going to hit that eighty-two, eighty-two percent cap in six years, which is something else. And along with us being in the twenty-fourth percentile for per people expenditure. So yeah, it's a lot, lots to digest there. So first question I have, so in, in the budget book, so in our, in the district achievement profile, we see that MCAS scores in math and English and language arts and science have seen decreases in the number of students exceeding or meeting expectations and increases number of students partially meeting or not meeting expectations from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one. And the overall performance metrics remain better than the statewide averages. In some cases, the decreases in students meeting or exceeding expectations were greater than the statewide decreases. So could you please expand upon how the elementary and middle school investment initiatives of literacy specialists? of literacy specialists and English language learners, teachers and ESPs, Wilson language teachers and the teacher curriculum leaders will help to address these achievement decreases?
Great, that is a wonderful question. I, I want to note for those who may be watching this that part of the larger budget book, so it's not included in the presentation tonight, but part of the larger budget book, which has been posted in two places. It's part of tonight's meeting packet. It is also part of the budget website. Prominently at the top, the FY twenty-three proposed budget is there and there are some student performance metrics, including the MCAS scores listed, which is part of the school, school and district profiles. And so there have been some decreases in MCAS scores. The MCAS presentation that was given previously by Dr. Ashley and Dr. Rogers outlined that, you know, certainly across the entire state, there was a decrease in MCAS scores in ELA math and science. And much of that's to be expected. And we certainly don't want to place any blame on the kiddos. This has been an incredibly difficult time. But it could be, you know, kind of a helpful tool among many that we have. We also have our NWA assessments. We have other benchmark assessments that teachers, that teachers give and, and other, other data at our disposal to see how students are doing academically. And MCAS is one of those. And the state comparisons are helpful, too. And there were some, some cases and some areas pointed out for opportunities for growth, let's say, within, within students' academic performance. And so you are seeing a number of investment initiatives. And I rewound the presentation to those slides to focus on the literacy specialist, the English language teachers, our special educators and the curriculum support in particular at the middle level, all of which would be very much designed towards making sure that teachers, making sure that students are having that guaranteed and viable curriculum, the best practices, most effective practices and instruction. You know, and MCAS scores aren't the end-all and be-all. Again, they're one tool around which we measure. But they also give us a comparison, like the MAP, NWA MAP as well, a comparison of how our students are doing to, to other students their age. And all of those initiatives, all of those investments would help support, would help support students academically.
Thank you.
Elise?
Sure. So we fund what we value. I think one of my favorite metaphors for social emotional learning is social emotional learning isn't adding one more thing onto people's plates. It's the plate itself. So it's really the foundation on which everything else, learning and, you know, MCAS and everything else is piled upon. And so if the social emotional learning piece isn't, isn't funded robustly, then how do we, how do we pile the other things up on top of that? And I think, you know, the, I'm looking at this one here, the student, the school adjustment counselor graph here, the green one. We had a spirited discussion in SWAC a couple of weeks back about, about school adjustment counselors and outside supports and how mental health supports for, you know, private supports are just so, so hard to get right now. And so the school, the school staff end up taking on sort of higher levels, more kids in crisis and really working hard at that level. And so then it's like the tier one, the gen ed classroom, social emotional learning, it falls onto the teachers and, you know, so many of them do such a great job with that. But if we could have the counselors going into the classrooms, if they have the time to go into the classrooms to support the social emotional learning, to really teach the explicit lessons and have the hands-on time with kids, sort of like the FEA statement, which was saying direct staff with kids. That would be so beneficial. We're just coming off a pandemic. And I think, Dr. Hearn, I know you said the student counselor ratio is within the range of what's recommended, but are those pre-COVID numbers? I was like, when did that recommendation come out?
So I received it. It may, I'll just say, I, I received it a few weeks ago as part of like the Massachusetts or National School Counselors Association making us all aware of the role of school counselors. It included school psychologists and it also included school nurses. And it was numbers from there. If they had previously published them, I don't know. But they came my way just within the last month or six weeks. And I guess what I would, what I would follow up, I think we completely agree with that and do see, do see some missed opportunities or opportunity costs if counselors can't get into classrooms and kind of teach alongside teachers. The bright counselors are strategically, so rather than adding kind of adjustment counselors, the bright counselors are added strategically to meet a missing need. Right now, our school adjustment counselors that are assigned to individual schools are kind of working with all sorts of students, including those who have kind of highest clinical needs. The bright counselors would be able to focus on a smaller group of students with more intense needs who are perhaps returning to school from hospitalization, perhaps experiencing concussions. And so those students with kind of those highest clinical needs would be supported by the bright counselor with the sort of theory of action that if we introduce bright counselors into our middle school and high schools, the adjustment counselors that are currently staffing those schools will then have more room in their schedules to do group counseling or to go into classrooms and provide support in that way.
Right, gotcha. That makes sense. So, and that would be two bright counselors and
two ESPs. Okay. One, one of each.
Between, in the secondary level?
Yeah.
And is that not started yet?
It'll start next year is the proposal.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Megan?
Actually, I don't have a question right now.
Come back around? Just say no.
No.
Okay, good. All right, go ahead, Dave.
All right, two A's.
Two A, okay, go ahead.
Actually, I just wanted to clarify with the chapter seventy funding. So one, with the, the net school spending. So that's the, the bare minimum that, in fact, that's what, what the, the state is saying. Everybody kind of has to come to this level. And you can kind of, you know, many individuals do invest more. We only kind of go over about like eleven percent of the minimum for, for what we're spending. Is that correct?
Yeah, so districts are required to meet that minimum, that net school spending requirement in order to comply with the law. So that, that required net school spending is going to be different in every district, depending on your circumstances. So yes, right now, we are spending about seven and a half million dollars more than net school spending, which is about eleven point two percent more.
So one thing that really kind of, kind of drove me to be in this seat right here was former school committee member, Tim Keenan. I constantly remember hearing him all the time talk about that seventy-five percent statistic. The fact that seventy-five percent of other districts across the Commonwealth are spending more per pupil than Franklin. And when Chairwoman Spencer talks about, you know, the budget is what we, what we value. I know, you know, I certainly, you know, many other friends and family certainly value the education that Franklin is able to provide. And, and we do provide a fantastic level of education, but by continually stretching the dollar. Because when, if we're, we're spending eleven percent over what that, that state, you know, minimum is, it's clearly not that highest investment that other districts are spending, are providing, are investing in every one of their students. And it's something that I think that this entire community certainly has to, to start to, to look towards. And, you know, is that statistic, the fact that seventy-five percent of other districts are spending more per pupil, is that something that we're okay with? Or is that something that we're looking to change?
Mr. Charles, go ahead.
Yes, sure. And so just, my whole thought is, I want to get a sense of what is the value we're putting in front of us. And I feel like you've done a great job in doing so. I was hoping, though, that you could elaborate a little bit more on the teacher, teacher curriculum leaders that are going in the middle level. I feel like I get a sense of how they'll help the day-to-day, but could you just elaborate a little bit more on like really, how, how would this impact our teachers? And what will this, how will they better assist our students with these, these two positions?
So one of the areas that the curriculum leaders would help to support is providing a written curriculum that's guaranteed and viable across all three middle schools. Our educators do some kind of level setting and some kind of comparison to each other. But there isn't that guaranteed viable written curriculum across all three middle schools. And I think that that, that means that the portrait of a graduate, you know, are we kind of meeting those goals and helping students strive towards, strive towards what we, as a community, have said we aspire, making sure that all of the standards or the prioritized standards that we expect are addressed. So, you know, kind of first and foremost, I think that's an unmet need that we currently have. Again, the teacher leaders are doing with the stipends the best they can to kind of help support through professional development and through kind of department meeting time. But they really, individual teachers, you know, don't have, don't have the time to, to write all of the curriculum that's needed. And that's a real missing need. And then I think there's a matter of, and, and it would be done in partnership and collaboration. It's not necessarily something that's going to happen to the teachers. You know, ideally, teacher leadership and kind of one of the ways that the roles, the role would be crafted is to have somebody who has a deep, deep knowledge in their subject area and has that credibility of teaching experience in the classroom in order to gain the trust and the support of educators. And, and then you kind of work as a partner to support them in terms of that written curriculum. And in terms of implementing the curriculum, helping to support implementation in the classroom, it could be by coaching and going in and leading a lesson or participating in a lesson with a teacher in, in smaller groups, supporting the implementation of materials that may be newly implemented. We have, we have, I think, some early inklings or a comparative success with our math CETs. This does not propose to eliminate our math CETs, but our math CETs have done tremendous work because they teach, I think they typically teach point six or three classes and they do have some release time to support their colleagues in terms of math implementation. And they've done tremendous work in implementing illustrative math. They, this would be kind of an expansion of that because I think even with that teaching sixty percent, there still isn't quite enough time, especially when you start to think about calibrating and coordinating that across all three middle schools.
So just in short, I'm not going to do it as eloquently as you, but we're just lifting some of the burden off of the teachers that are doing it today for aligning all this work. And then making sure that the middle level, regardless of which school they go to, they have the same kind of baseline and they're not going to go to the high school. And now we have gaps within students from across town.
Yeah, that's a great, it's a great way of putting it from kind of the student perspective. I was thinking more from the teacher perspective, but from a student perspective, yeah. If there were a set of triplets and there was a triplet in each of the schools that they're having, you know, a similar and comparable experience and going to the high school on kind of that same footing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Could you please expand upon the challenges that our students with special, special needs have been facing during the pandemic and how the MAC goals and special educator investments will help to address these needs?
Sure. So I think we can talk about that kind of at two levels. One is struggles during the pandemic. And then overall pandemic aside, how students' needs have, you know, in terms of the population have increased over time, not necessarily as it relates specific to, to one, one thing like the pandemic. I'm going to turn it to Paula, she wants to chime in with some detail.
Sure. So because of the pandemic, you know, our teachers did the best they could when we went all remote. And, but these are our neediest learners and with our most significant difficulties. So it was more challenging to really provide high-quality specialized instruction over Zoom, over Google meets. I mean, we did the best we could, parents did the best they could facilitating, but they didn't get that consistent, high-quality instruction. So we did see some gaps from that. And then, but as Dr. Hearn alluded to, but we're also seeing students come in with more significant disabilities. We're seeing a number of students, more and more students being identified with dyslexia, dyscalculia. And we're trying to identify those students early and providing that specialized instruction that they need early on. And we're also, as, you know, we've all alluded to of the social emotional challenges that our students are experiencing as well, especially at the middle school and high school level in regards to anxiety and school refusal. So really needing to increase the amount of support and services for our students with social emotional needs in our reach program. So it's kind of a twofold impact from a pandemic that we're seeing and also just naturally seeing more students with more significant disabilities.
And I think that these, these programs provide tremendous services that are very specific to the needs of the students, the goals of the students on their IEPs and does so in the least restrictive environment so that students, to the greatest extent possible, are included in, you know, kind of general education classrooms or specials as, as, as appropriate. And so it really allows us that, that flexibility. And our educators do a tremendous job.
They do.
Thank you very much.
Elise?
I think there's a couple of things that are worth repeating that you've said for probably many years. And I've appreciated and I know the community appreciates it. Sometimes we need to repeat things. Sometimes I think people are just starting to pay attention now. So the difference between level service and level funded was always really pivotal and the lightbulb moment for me to really understand those terms. Because I think we throw them around, town council throws them around. You know, they say, don't worry, you'll be level funded. And it just sounds so nice. But then when you realize that level funded is very different from level service, it doesn't sound as nice. So I wonder if, if maybe we could review that one quickly right now. And then the other thing for another time, probably because it's a visual, is that the supporting roles in education that really outlines, you know, the interventionists and the AB tutors and all those different roles that are working in schools with kids, directly with kids and how important they are. Because that's something that I think a lot of us just sort of take for granted or we know it and we just move on or reference them and understand how important they are. So we understand why it's important to fund those positions. But a lot of people in the community don't know the intricacies of that.
Yeah. So that's good feedback. And we'll kind of dust off and refresh that education support roles. I think you heard from the comments earlier around, you know, the educators appreciating, having the supports in the school building. One, one classroom teacher can't do it alone. It really does have to be a team. And it's a team of folks working together. And analogy just popped in my head, too, that may be helpful to the community. So we'll work on some messaging, messaging there. But in terms of having a level funded budget, a level funded budget would actually come with cuts. You know, level service is like three point four million dollars of an increase. And level service is, those increases are driven by the major budget drivers that Miriam talked about with, you know, salary increases that are contractual, transportation rate increases, healthcare rate increases and tuition for special education out of district. Those are kind of our major budget drivers. And those are going to go up every year. Healthcare is the one that probably goes up the greatest amount. It's, it's not the largest chunk of the budget, but it goes up a great amount on an annual basis and can be a little bit of a budget buster. We were in that spot a couple of years ago where it was double digits increase. And so, so level funded would actually come with cuts and it would not be level service. So level service does require some measure of increase every year. Typically, you know, it is typically three or three and a half million dollar increase that we anticipate meeting kind of level service. Now, the needs change. And so it's not, you know, it's not just going to mean that we take this year's budget and move it forward and, and, you know, as a carbon copy, just with a three point four million dollar increase. There are, there are, like you saw tonight, English learner needs that emerge. And then, you know, kind of trying to be fiscally responsible, think about where we can do things differently, things that aren't returning on the investment, maybe letting go of some of those things. So level service, you know, does So level service does try to maintain services without adding, that's not like a lot of new initiatives and new programs and new programming, which would fall into the category of, of, we've called them different things over the years, but like adding elementary language wouldn't necess, that wouldn't be a new service, I would, I would say, or a restoration, if you wanted to really think about it that way.
Right, definitely. So for, for the lay folks at home, what I'm hearing is that level service is keeping what we have and paying what it takes to keep what we have, even though that cost is increasing. And level funded is we get the same pot of money. And since everything increases, we have to keep, we have to make cuts because we only have that same pot of money. And then also hearing that level service isn't necessarily what we're striving for because needs change, so services change. So it's not a carbon copy from the year before. So level service, even though that feels a little bit better to me than level funded, I guess, but I know what you mean, that things are changing, the world is changing, the needs are changing, the population is changing. And so we also need to have level service plus, you know, the things that we need to meet the initiatives of the district. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification on level service. I just want to echo what Mr. Gallin was saying about, you know, about, you know, why they wanted to be in the school committee, too, is I'd really like to see us, you know, not be in the bottom, you know, funding for the, you know, locally. And if, you know, we invested more, you know, spent more money locally in our school system, you know, would be great.
I didn't go last time, so I'm going to go now. This was my favorite one. I called Dave on Saturday when I sat down and I'm like, "Who made this? I need to know because I would have loved this last year. I loved it. I was so excited." That it really shows the community the amount that we're now being asked to spend. The state is clearly saying, "We're not going to give you, we're giving you less money every year." This was perfect. I loved it so much. Okay, so in addition to the lovely presentation, you also provided a memo. And it stated that the budget prioritizes services and supports for students and staff. So I was just wondering, could you give an example of maybe how? Were there talks of supporting kids and teachers emotionally, kind of like the literacy and math coaches?
Can you, can you ask that again? I'm not quite sure what you're.
So you talked about how we're going to prioritize like emotional support for students and staff. Is there, are there going to be staff somehow available to students for their emotional support? Kind of like the literacy and math specialists?
So I think we're proposing to maintain the counseling staff that we've previously had in the budgets.
Yep.
And again, strategically thinking about possible revenue sources, use S R funding to provide social worker, bright counselors to introduce some folks with a slightly different skillset to support some of the unmet needs that we think are currently there, including high, like students with high clinical case needs. And then from a social work perspective, somebody that can kind of really help coordinate services across departments and both within and outside of the district.
Thank you. Camille?
Yes. It was a month ago that we heard the wonderful diversity, equity, and inclusion presentation that all of us were proud to see, all the different programs, all the different initiatives, all the different ways that we're helping all of our diverse learners. Well, this is where the rubber meets the road in the budget. And you have to fund those things in order to have those prideful programs. So this is where it comes in, where we have to support our special education learners. This is where we have to support our English language learners. This is where we have to support the social motion learning of our kids. This is where we, I think, I think people sometimes in the private sector think that additional positions are like middle managers. And you know, the office was a whole franchise based on making fun of middle managers. But these are not middle managers like Michael Scott. These are essential to teachers, essential to classroom teachers, essential to the entire school and every service that it provides to all of our students. So I just wanted to, maybe at the risk of sounding pedantic, to make clear that a month ago, we saw the presentation and now we are seeing where the ask is to make sure it's funded. That's it.
Dave?
Thank you. So with the, the healthcare rise at eight percent, so that's not for a, you know, eight percent better product, that's just the going rate. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Same plan design.
And so it's just, it's just the cost of doing business in order to continue to.
That's correct.
And transportation, so it occupies like three, three and a half percent of our budget. My understanding that that providing transportation, free transportation for K to six is state mandated, that is outside of two mile radius. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we receive any benefits from the state? In order to, any, any funding from the state in order to kind of carry out their, their policy, their mandate?
None.
So this is, I know oftentimes, you know, hear about unfunded mandates. And, you know, certainly it sounds like that this is, you know, exactly one of them where the state is obligating us to be able to provide that transportation cost, you know, K to six outside the two percent, two mile radius, where transportation itself is three and a half percent of our entire budget. Our hands are entirely tied. We don't have the option, as I understand it, to not follow the state's mandate, correct?
Correct.
Between, and the transportation isn't one of the only unfunded mandates that the state has. And these are, it's both federal and at the state level. But numerous mandates and that policies that we have to follow, that we have to adhere to and that we have to pay for without receiving the adequate funding from the state itself. And, and so when you, when you look at our budget, when you look at kind of the difference of, you know, like level service versus level funding, when you look at the, you know, the millions that we're asking more over last year, so much of the money in our budget, it sounds like that our hands are tied. You know, we don't have any say over that eight percent increase for the health insurance. We don't have any say over the transportation costs that we're going to have. So much of the wiggle room that we have in our budget is, is just imaginary, is not there. And, and so again, when we're looking at, at how much we're spending, when we're looking at our budget, Franklin, again, I've said this so many times, that has been incredibly creative with our budget. But it, it sounds like, you know, we continue to run out of opportunities to continue to be creative. Because with things, you know, such as many of the unfunded mandates that we have and with the rising cost of health insurance, we don't have as much room to maneuver through the budget. And, and so again, I really would stress to the entire community to, to take a look at what you value and determine whether or not, you know, we want to be a community that is, is okay with seventy-five percent of other districts spending more per pupil than us or if we're a community that wants to go, you know, more than eleven percent over the bare minimum.
I'd just like to say I'm tired of hearing like praise that we're doing so well with scraping pennies and having, like, I'm just, I'm so tired of it.
It's embarrassing.
Yeah, it's embarrassing. Just, yep.
So I guess hypothetically, if we had gone to the, the town council and said, "We would like to be, to do the amount for a level service," what is the process? Like, what, what does that look like? I mean, what would need to be done from the community's standpoint? Because I know folks have been asked about overrides and like really where, where does, where, what is beyond us that I guess the community needs to be aware of so that it's, we can, we can advocate for them, but they also need to support us in, you know, pitching it?
Yeah, yeah. So I think that, I don't want to speak on behalf of the town. It might be who folks to tune in to some of the budget conversations that are coming up over the next several weeks. Feel a little bit like an advertisement that joint committees on the Thursday, the tenth. But that I think would give, give the community, you know, kind of a real understanding of what revenue sources the town has, where, you know, money comes into the town, you know, both from the state as well as kind of locally and local receipts and a few other avenues that they have. They have some of their own grant funding as well. And, and then how they apportion that out. You know, there are limits in terms of the revenue that can be raised with respect to Proposition Two and a Half and the tax levy is limited by two and a half percent. But then there's new growth on top of that. The town administrator anticipates what new growth is going to be. And that factors into the amount that might be available for operating budgets. It also factors into an amount that may ultimately become available in free cash, which goes into the capital budgeting process. And they have some policies that they follow related to funding O P E B liability and certain stabilization accounts. And I think that the town administrator does a really nice job of kind of laying out some of those budget assumptions on the town side. You know, in terms of override and what you had talked about there, you know, that would be a request to the town council to go ask the citizens for an override. The citizens would, it would need to be first approved to go on a ballot that the citizens would then vote related to kind of a specific, kind of a specific proposal around which that levy, that levy limit would, would increase because taxes would be raised on a permanent basis to support that additional revenue. Do you want to add any more to that?
No, I think you've summarized it well.
Yeah, so that's kind of the process. And, you know, I think there'll be a lot more conversation coming up in the next couple of weeks about the intersection of all of these, all of these, you know, budgets and how, how many is spent in the schools, in the town, and where that money comes from.
Thank you. And you said Thursday, what time?
I think it's at six.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Need a promo.
I know, right? Dave?
Yes, thank you. So, you know, while we're on the topic of increasing costs, so we're seeing an increase in out-of-district tuition cost of five percent, but there's also a decrease of about one point one million for, from F Y twenty-two because of circuit breaker reimbursement funds and prepayment expenditures. So how repeatable or sustainable is this with the prepayment and the circuit breaker reimbursement funds? How, how much do we anticipate circuit breaker reimbursement funds to offset future increases? And how do we anticipate being able to prepay these expenditures again in future fiscal years?
Yeah, so, so I think we anticipate, you know, circuit breaker for next year being three point one million because that's what we are, are actually going to collect from the state in reimbursements in this fiscal year. And based on the school committee's philosophy of basically having a year in the bank to apply it for the following year, that gives us some stability for the immediate future. Circuit breaker, as you know, is, is based on the students in the program and the costs of those out-of-district programs and the level of funding that the state provides, which is probably very close to seventy-five percent for tuition. It will hit seventy-five percent for tuition because the Student Opportunity Act dictates that. And, and then transportation, anything after that. So I think that there is some stability in terms of the reimbursement. The impact is going to be with our own student population and how that shifts from a year-to-year basis. But we'll always have that foreknowledge ahead of time because you'll have that year in the bank for the application the following year. Relative to prepaid tuition, I think that's something that we can sustain for a short period of time, for a few years. And that's going to be on an annual basis, based on what might occur during any particular budget year and where expenses might be less because hypothetically, we couldn't find substitutes, so we are not spending as much on substitutes, for example. So, so that is, is more of an expense that I would be aware of for future funding to try to level that off and bring that down over time. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Elise?
Not right now, but for sake of discussion, could we have an estimated cost of reviving a world language program? That's something we hear about a lot. It's something that a number of other districts have in place in various forms. And I can't imagine it would be cheap and easy or else that we would have done it a while ago. So I, I'd love to see just a ballpark because I really have no, no idea of how much that might be.
We can, if it's okay, bring it back at the next discussion.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Megan?
So the, you know, the possibility of, you know, override was, you know, mentioned. So, yeah, if we, you know, if the town tries to increase the tax over two, two and a half percent, that would require an override. What's the, like, the, is there a set size for the override? Or is it like, you know, is it just anything north of two point five? Like, how, how does that work? Like, are there certain increments or?
There's no certain increments. I think, you know, it would come to kind of like a school committee vision around what's needed and a proposal with a certain like monetary value. And then that would be kind of what the ask would be going forward, you know, X number of million dollars and how that would impact kind of an individual property tax, home, condo, that sort of thing. So there's no, there's no kind of set amount.
All right, thank you.
I know you've mentioned a student-staff ratio for school adjustment counselors. Is there one for the special education staff?
Student? I think it's really highly variable for special education, depending upon the profile of students. So it would be pretty broad. It would be pretty broad.
Depending on the needs of each school?
Depending on the age, depending upon the, kind of, I, what the I E P spells out as it relates to specialized services. And then, I mean, because it's special, it's just such a continuum of needs. And so caseloads could, could kind of vary. I mean, we could give you a ballpark, but we could.
It's hard to do that because the number of students doesn't tell the whole story because it's, it's what the student, each student needs. And each student needs is based on, you know, the services are based on what the student needs to make effective progress. So you really can't go by a number of, like, there's so many students to this one staff member. It's really hard because of the amount of services that each student requires.
Okay.
It's, it's, yeah, it's hard to determine.
I didn't know, is it possible to receive at the next meeting classroom sizes at each school?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And then maybe, I don't know, caseloads per school?
Sure, okay.
Ms. Bernstein?
Oh, now it's Mrs. No.
It's getting late.
No.
Dave?
I got a question with the content area leaders at the middle school level. Do you know how much they receive in their stipends? Like, what's like the annual amount that they kind of get for the stipend?
It's one thousand five hundred ninety dollars and sixteen cents approximately.
Okay, all right.
It's dictated by the contract.
Okay. How many, was it two? How many contents?
The subject area coordinator stipends are paid to roughly twelve people, four subjects, basically three school, three school, three grades, sorry. But the middle school. But the middle school curriculum leaders are um, funding, the request is for funding to FTE.
Yeah, so um, more kind of um, wondering if, so the the two uh, full-time curriculum. Individuals that we're looking to have, you know, it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars. But obviously, what if, should those two come online and be fully funded, uh, the stipends will go away. Uh, so there will be some savings kind of from by in, by introducing two full-time uh, individuals. There will be some savings as we're no longer be paying the stipends.
I think we would still propose to keep the stipends um, so that each building has a kind of a subject leader. Within the building uh, to support kind of that building and kind of coordinate with those, with those folks.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Al?
No further questions.
Dave?
Yes, um, so there's an increase in revolving fund offsets of um, five hundred fifteen thou- thousand over FY twenty-two. For a total of five million, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And so given the trends that we're seeing with how our required local contribution is going to be increasing over um, the next few years. Will such increases in these revolving funds off, fund offsets be sustainable in future fiscal years?
Yeah, so generally, we receive about four and a half million dollars or so in revolving funds on an annual basis. Those are fees that are um, taken in for specific programs like transportation for paid ride. For example, athletics, those kinds of things. So so on a whole, those are, that's, that's kind of where we would want to be on any given year. But I think we've had an opportunity to maintain some level of revolving funds to be able to apply in in uh, future fiscal years. Because of some savings that we've seen um, as a result of some services not um, happening during the pandemic years. You know, um, reductions in transportation costs um, um, to to a small degree, um, with fewer buses running, um, substitutes, for example. So so with some of those expenses um, being um, reduced. We um, we had an opportunity to maintain a higher level of revolving funds. So so I think in in the short term, we can sustain that, but in the long term, that will absolutely not be sustainable. For only taking in four and a half million dollars, not going to be able to spend five and a half.
Thank you.
You don't even need me.
We need you.
Okay, this might be getting a little bit in the weeds. I feel like we've had a lot of really big ideas here. Really appreciate everybody's different brains and trains of thought. And um, it just jumped out at me when I was reading through the budget book. So are you expecting to pay the ABA tutors a similar salary as an ESP even with the increased expectations and responsibilities in that role? And do they have any type of stipend for data summary and stuff after school? Like, are they, are they in the same unit as the ESP?
They do make a s- uh, a slightly higher wage. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but they do make a slightly higher wage.
They were, and they also work a longer school day and they work um, throughout the whole school year. They support the students throughout the summer. Yep, and they're not in the bargaining unit.
Oh, they're not. Interesting. Okay, so it's not a separate unit, they're just an individual contract. Okay.
Um, no questions.
Camille?
I'm good. Now it's Camille.
Do what I want.
Next round's just going to be C.
Yeah, you.
Dave?
Question about uh, federal and state grants. How um, how exactly does that process uh, go? Is is any one particular person responsible for the grant writing?
So um, no, there isn't one particular person responsible for writing the grant. Uh, I think as an administrative team, we all have some input into many of the grants. I touch each of them um, and certainly support the program directors uh, and in the budgeting piece. But the the, for example, there are certain grants that will fall to the special services director for uh, entitlement grants. For special education. Um, so she'll write the narrative pieces and we'll talk about how we're going to spend that money. And and how um, what what services we're going to support. And and work together to create uh, to create the the application for that grant. You know, the Title II grant goes through our um, Director of um, English Language Arts, or Director of Curriculum for English Language Arts. So so she'll write, we'll talk about what those um, initiatives might be that support that grant. Um, and you can see in your book, the detail of each one of those grants and how that uh, those funding, uh, that funding is allocated um, by grant. So it's not one individual that writes, writes a grant. We don't have a particular grant writer. Um, when it comes to competitive grants, then um, there's always an opportunity for folks to write a grant. We've um, had our Director of Curriculum for STEM um, write some grants for um, math curriculum. And um, science professional development. Most recently, we've had our Food Service Director write a grant for some equipment. So all of those opportunities are out there um, for writing some grants. Whether we get them or not remains to be seen, but with our entitlement grants, those are um, spread across the board as to um, who writes. Pieces of it. And then we all put it together and ultimately I upload it all.
Historically, has Franklin ever had, uh, thank you uh, very much. Historically, has Franklin ever had a full-time grant writer for those competitive grants?
It's not to my knowledge. I've been here thirteen years and we've never had a grant writer.
I I have seen it. I don't know to to what extent, but just kind of looking at budgets from other districts, I have seen that. Uh, being utilized and effectively, you know, the the age-old saying of you gotta, you gotta spend money to make money. And I would imagine that that return on investment, if that might be something we could look for in in future budgets. You know, that really might be a great um, ROI on that. Spend a little bit of money to to hire one individual to write all those competitive grants. And effectively, their salary is then just repaid uh, by bringing in all this additional funding sources. Additional revenue sources. And uh, now is it um, also with grant writing, is that something that anyone in in the community can do? Is that something that a school committee uh, members, we can kind of work with uh, the district to help write grants?
Do you have all this free time? Like, what are you talking about?
He's trying to get you to do it.
I would just have one caution about grants. I do think that it, they can be a tremendous asset to the district and a great return on investment. They can come with some uh, strings attached, so to speak, in terms of some of the uh, obligations that we would then be under. And um, if it's not adding staff, then you're asking existing staff to perhaps bring on, you know, something uh, even new again. In terms of the capacity piece. So it's just one caution that I would have around, you know, too much, uh, too much of a good thing can be really hard to implement. But uh, there are certainly districts that have um, grant writing support. And uh, could could certainly be, uh, there are some really interesting grants out there from private foundations. Like redesign grant, school redesign grants, to be thinking about how you might redesign library spaces, uh, for example. So there are some really, there are some really interesting opportunities out there, but it may take personnel um, also not only to write the grant, but also implementing. So maybe that comes with the grant, but just so.
To target grants to to what your initiatives are and support. We've done um, school safety grants where our team is collectively um, committed to that. And with that, we received money to continue, but we had a s- a a safety plan. So I feel like the more um, you can align to what your goals and plans are competitively, um, grant uh, award, awarders. Uh, will look for that to say, okay, is this a one-off or is this, does this school system have a plan for how they would do this? And this way, it's not the tail wagging the dog where you write a grant and get it and then you have to figure a way. But also just to kind of align to what your goals are and then it becomes more of a um, a seamless implementation. Um, and that's when you have to be really selective with it, but they do, they do take time to do well and uh, often require data that you need to support why you need that, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
So just one final question. Um, so this has been mentioned many times this evening. We are in the twenty-fifth percentile in per pupil spending throughout the state. And our in-district per pupil expenditure is thirteen point three six less than the state average. So just to, just to ask it, what loss does this translate into when it comes to the educational experience we're providing Franklin students relative to our surrounding communities?
I think in a dollar value, we calculated it a few years back and I think it uh, calculates out to fifteen million dollars. And um, when we tried to account for some of the things that would be captured in that. You know, fortunately, I think through some uh, creative um, budget, you know, budgeting and some of the resources we've received through the federal government. We were able to introduce some of the things that were on that list, including additional counselors, including digital learning integrationists. You know, certainly one of the things that we had uh, that we had mentioned uh, was around um, salaries at that time. As part of that fifteen million um, libraries, a lot of things that were previously cut, music programs. More offerings and more expanded uh, music programs, particularly at the elementary level, world language. Those were some of the things that um, you know, they they come up over and over and over again of 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 things that were cut or wishes and desires um, of people in the community. But I believe that the value translated at the time to fifteen million, if we were at the state average.
Just to be at.
Just to be at the state average.
Wow. Thank you for that.
I'm good too.
Hi, Sam. I want to say at our special education presentation, which was amazing. There was a discussion on staff being hired specifically around dyslexia. Is that position highlighted in here?
It's going to be through the grants, the Opera Grant.
Okay, alright, perfect. Alright, also circling back to Dr. Hearn's memo. I just kind of wanted to highlight this portion for the community, the twenty people listening on Zoom. While the forecast for the development of the FY twenty-four budget will likely be similar to this current FY twenty-three budget. FY twenty-five will present more challenges, given the continued needs across the district, the local fiscal forecast. And the expiration of COVID relief funding. I think it's important to kind of highlight that for the community. Also, I thought it was interesting, um, according to the Board of Assessors' report in December. Uh, I noted that the average single-family tax bill in FY twenty-two was seven thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars. Um, and the cost per pupil for FY twenty-three is over fourteen thousand dollars. Am am I correct to assume that the cost per pupil will only continue to go up every year?
You are most likely correct.
I am correct, okay. That was it. Um, does anybody have any other questions, concerns, comments?
No.
Dave? Alright, so I look forward to continuing this in two weeks when we have our public budget hearing.
Great. And between now and then, the Budget Subcommittee will be meeting to discuss um, and.
Thursday, six thirty, be there.
And then also the Joint Budget Subcommittee, if I, I may have said that incorrectly, Joint Budget on Thursday. And then the School Committee's Budget Subcommittee is meeting next Tuesday.
Yes. Alright, thank you, Miriam and Dr. Hearn.
Thank you.
We put Miriam first because I know that you did a lot, but. I give everybody a chance to relocate. Yeah, some touch it when we had twenty people. Um, okay, so moving. Um, sure, yeah. Move right along, uh, item three, discussion action items, Dr. Hearn.
Thank you. Um, so the first discussion action item is a second read and adoption of policy GDQD. Which you moved to second read at your last meeting, suspension dismissal of support staff members. I recommend adoption of policy GT GDQD, suspension and dismissal of support staff members as discussed.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt? Don't move. Is there a second?
So I don't.
Alright, discussion, questions? Nope, okay, seeing none, but we'll come on a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Right, Carrie, Dr. Hearn?
Okay, um, so there are a number of policies coming out of the Policy Subcommittee meeting last week uh, for our first reading. Um, I'll set the stage on uh, them and I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in uh, from the Policy Subcommittee or the Chair. Related to them. Um, we talked about uh, EBCFA face coverings uh, in light of the um, changes uh, made at the special meeting in February. So we have some proposed uh, proposed language changes uh, related to no longer requiring it on buses. Allowing the district uh, some flexibility uh, to amend the policy uh, should DESI guidance change. And then we updated the link there. The Policy Subcommittee has been spending quite a bit of time uh, talking about and reviewing uh, the bullying prevention and intervention policy. Looked at a couple of different models. Um, and I, I guess I would say my takeaway was really wanting to see a a lot more detail. And a lot more clarity uh, with respect to um, you know, what people can expect uh, in terms of uh, what would happen. Related to a bullying investigation and how uh, the district uh, goes at addressing uh, bullying uh, in proactive ways. And uh, after the fact. So um, so that is included here as a really revised, but almost entirely newly written policy. For your first read. BEDB and BEDH are your order of business and your um, public participation at school committee meetings. And um, there was probably some significant discussion at the last meeting uh, and the changes are highlighted for you. And um, I recommend uh, moving the following policies to a second reading uh, as discussed. EBCFA face coverings, JICFB bullying prevention and intervention, BEDB order of business, BEDH public participation at school committee meetings. And I suppose after the motion, you can have a discussion if you choose.
Is there a motion to move policies EBCFA, JICFB, BEDB and BEDH to a second reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
So I don't.
Alright, discussion, questions? I wasn't sure if maybe Mr. Gier or Mr. Callahan, who's the Chair, had anything they wanted to add, say?
Well, certainly, um, we'll start just with uh, in terms of the bullying uh, policy. That this was a a day one uh, initiative from the Policy Subcommittee. To, and as as Dr. Hearn had um, had stated, to uh, effectively completely rewrite uh, the existing uh, policies. I really uh, thank um, the fellow committee members, uh, Dr. Hearn and her uh, office. For all the work that's being done uh, with this policy. It's uh, it is incredibly robust. Uh, in detailed, you know, even down to um, each individual administrator, their responsibilities when an event occurs. Uh, and then I know that uh, we also had a discussion about the actual plan itself. This, we're setting the tone with the policy uh, that we have here. And uh, that uh, Central Office and the uh, the admin team will be working on initiating a plan. I'll flip it over to Mr. Gier.
So um, per the policy, we're expected to have an implementation plan that really just outlines and creates more detail. On how this policy will be implemented. You'll notice in the policy, it talks about staff trainings, um, student um, education. And then also in addition to the responsibilities of of all of the different roles um, that folks play within the district to support uh, this work. So um, that, that's going to be coming back to you. Um, it is part of the, per the policy. We're expected to put together um, a committee that has uh, input from stakeholders um, to help develop um, that plan. We have a draft plan, but we need to now refine it once this policy is adopted and formalized. Logically, we would then use that as the, the primary source to help build out that that implementation plan. Um, that we would, we would then come back and present and share.
So um, yeah, with the the bullying. So, um, yeah, with the, the bullying, it's something you're really just proud of, uh, the work, uh, that we've all done, uh, with this. And then, and, um, Dr. Hearn, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this has already been sent to the legal team, uh, for review, analysis and feedback.
Camille, questions?
No.
Uh, no questions, just, uh, comment though, in comparison to the other report, yeah, definitely more comprehensive, um, phenomenal work and just really laying out what. Expectations are, because I think that's where we get a lot of the, the confusion from. Um, so, so, so kudos to, to the work that's been put into this.
None, thank you.
Hi, Sam. I knew you would.
I know. Cause I, you know, I miss. Policy still has my heart. Okay, so page four, under C. Fourth paragraph down, there's a his slash hers. And that needs to be there, right? Are we doing that?
Yes.
And then top of page five. Can you, can you, I'm sorry, can you back up just one second and remind me where that is? All right, page four, under C.
Is it page four on the document or page four on the viewer?
So, on the doc.
I found it. The one that says page four at the bottom of the paper.
We did, viewing it on here, so it's different patch nation.
Right, right, right. We did catch some of the other ones. Okay. And then, all right, top of page five, so. There's that paragraph, that little paragraph, because of the legal requirements regarding the confidentiality of student records. School officials are generally prohibited from informing the complainant of specific disciplinary action taken against a student unless it involves a stay away. So I, I understand that, um, because we need to follow the law of confidentiality. Um, but I could imagine that there could be some. Questions or suspicion or hurt feelings, um, about the, the lack of transparency there. So I know that it's hard because you have to balance. The confidentiality with transparency, um, but. And I don't know if this goes in the policy or in the procedures, but is there a way to say something generally to say like. We have taken action and it's. I think it's, I think it's actually spelled out later on in the policy where it's, where you basically could say, when these things happen. These are some, the range of consequences that might be expected. Gotcha. So you don't pinpoint which consequence was assigned, but you say it's, you know, like one of these six. Range. Okay. Yeah, these are the possibilities and I, and I think it's spelled out later on.
E, um, E one talks about that.
Gotcha.
And E two.
Okay, um. All right, one more page fi- two more actually, page five, E. One. Last bullet. So adopting behavioral plans to include a focus on developing specific social skills and making a referral for evaluation. Is that special education evaluation? I think it is, but page one, um, sorry, page five. E. One, last bullet. I, I, I think it is related to that, yeah. I would think so. Could it be spelled out? I do think, yeah, I feel like that would help. Um, all right, top of page six. Within a reasonable period of time. I don't, I don't know. I feel like, I don't know, to me, I'm like, I like to get what I've done, a reasonable, like an hour and a half. I don't know, but to somebody else that was really busy and has a million balls in the air, it might be two months. I, I, I feel like that's really subjective. And I don't know. You know, I understand, like, you don't want to paint somebody into a corner with something that says, you know, exactly. Two point five weeks or something. I think what's, oh, I'm sorry, let me tell you about. That's okay. I guess I'm just sort of wondering like some of the, the discussion there and sort of deciding on, deciding on sort of an open-ended statement. I think that, um, my interpretation of that kind of in the moment, we didn't really discuss it, uh, and we do have another policy subcommittee meeting. It's not until.
April sixth.
April, so it's not before the next March meeting, um, so it could go back to the policy committee for discussion. My immediate reaction around that is that it would be very case-specific. So the initiation of an investigation is going to get launched right away, no matter what, and it's going to be looked at within a certain period of time, unless more time is needed. But based on the facts of the case, that could be, um. I think that that could be really dependent upon the facts of the case, and so it would be really hard to pinpoint. A two-week timeframe or a two-month timeframe. I think that would be really hard.
And this particular section speaks to within a reasonable time after a determination's been made, that the principal will check in with the target.
Right.
To determine if the remedial.
If it's working.
Is working.
Yeah.
So I think it's to give some time to see if the, the adjustments that have been made. So that's after a determination's been made and an aggressor's been. Dealt with disciplines, maybe been dealt out, some education. Um, so I think that's what that particular paragraph's referring to, within a reasonable time after an event. If, if I may weigh in.
Yeah.
Um, so the, the investigation itself, uh, of the allegation, um, is to be completed within fourteen days. Uh, because that was something with the existing policy that it was open-ended. It was, uh, the terminology itself was that the investigation must be done promptly, I believe. Um, and so on page four, um. See the last paragraph, it talks about the actual investigation itself. Um, that does require that, that timeline, that does have that, that timeline that must be addressed, if that helps alleviate any.
Yeah, I wonder, I, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to take the side of the target and target family. Um, because I think it's important here, so. I, I do, I understand, this all makes so much sense. It makes so much sense. It's case-specific, you know, the investigations under tight timelines, it makes so much sense. I just, I wonder if, like, it can be pre-established. With the target ahead of time or something like, you know, I'm going to check in with you tomorrow after science, or I'm going to check in with you in two and a half months. Like it's sort of depend, like you're saying, it depends on the, like, what if there's one, the one scariest trigger that's going to be happening on Thursday? I'll check in with you Friday morning, or if it's sort of ongoing. I think that can be part, so, um, a lot of times, uh, what'll happen is like a support plan. For the target, and so it could be spelled out in the support plan. Okay. So in the policy, a reasonable period of time could make sense in a policy. But in the plan, it's more specific as far as like we're agreeing. When I'm going to check in with you to see if this is working or not? Yeah. Okay. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Thanks.
No questions.
Okay. Um, all right. Okay. Um, all right, so no more discussion questions, seeing none, but we'll come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right. Moving right along, we move discussion only items, information matters. Um, superintendent evaluation, Elise.
Uh, we've got nothing new to update. No, no, I just.
CPAC, Elise.
Okay, um, we do have a CPAC update, there we go. Great news. So the CPAC has a meeting coming up on Thursday, March seventeenth. At seven PM and all families are welcome to attend. The purpose of the meeting is to explain the tiered focus monitoring process, which is when DSE reviews school programs, which happens every three years. At that meeting, there will be an opportunity for questions and they'll tell parents or guardians how they can be involved in the process. Again, that's Thursday, March seventeenth at seven, and you can find more information on Facebook, Franklin CPAC, and on their website, FranklinCPAC.org.
Thank you. Don't get comfortable. School Wellness Advisory Council.
Okay. Um, so SWAC, we met to discuss the DSE feedback on our drafted policy. The modified policy will go to policy subcommittee for discussion. Uh, at their next meeting, hopefully, and then we'll come before the full committee for, for more discussion approval. We had a long discussion about the importance of mental health supports for all students, and we'll continue brainstorming how SWAC can help. In addition to the great word, work being done by the building counselors, the substance abuse task force and the district's SEL committee. We're also working on updating the SWAC website, so stay tuned.
Budget, Mr. McNeil.
Yes, thank you. So as, uh, as was mentioned a couple of times tonight, budget subcommittee met on February seventeenth, where, uh. We discussed a preview of the superintendent's recommended FY twenty-three budget. Spoke about the budget development process, we're given overview of the investment initiatives. And talk next steps. So our next budget meeting, as was also mentioned a couple of times tonight, will be next Tuesday, March fifteenth. In addition to that, we'll be having the first meeting of the joint budget subcommittee this Thursday, March tenth at six thirty.
Okay, where is that?
Will be in chambers, I believe.
Not sure. I think it was posted today, so. Third floor training.
Third floor training.
My apologies.
Six thirty?
Six thirty.
Thursday?
Thursday.
Okay, third floor, all right.
I love that Steve knows and nobody else.
That's why we have Steve here.
Uh, policy, Mr. Callahan.
All right, um, yeah, we're firing on all cylinders. Uh, we have, uh, we've already kind of put forward a lot of, uh, work on the second readings and the stuff discussed for the first readings today. Uh, we have, um, the last meeting, we also talked about a lot of other, uh, policies that we'll start to review. That are coming down the pipeline, uh, certainly kind of make some recommendations to the existing bullying one as well. Uh, all on our April sixth, uh, meeting, our next one.
Um, joint PCC.
Yep. Um, we haven't had a meeting since our last time, so this one's on the twentieth.
All right, that's easy. Um. Substance abuse task force.
I'm happy to present, um.
We met this morning.
We, we met this morning and we're really excited as, as a group to announce we're going to be hosting our second. Series of critical conversations. The first in November, if you remember, was on mental health and substance use. And this one will take place on March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, from six to eight PM. And it will take place in the Franklin High School Auditorium, but we'll also have a Zoom webinar, and the focus will be on social media. And specifically the impact of social media. We're going to work to identify, um, strategies that can establish a healthy relationship with. Social media and also discuss some of the, um, the negative factors and how we can mitigate those negative factors and really. Amplify the benefits. Um, we're excited that we have Georgia Wells, who's a journalist for the Wall Street Journal, put out an article. And, and did, uh, tremendous research in this area on teens and social media use and the impact on teens. So we're excited to have. Her join the conversation. Also, um, Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito is, um, expected to join us as well, um, as part of this, and she runs a social media. Task force at the state level, um, in addition to our team of local panelists, and we're really excited. And the one thing I would emphasize is we, um, we received some great feedback from the last. Critical conversations we held where we had some panelists and then breakout sessions. We'll do the same thing. Um, but, uh, also wanted to have our families walk away with, um, some real actionable. Tasks or, uh, actionable resources that they can use immediately with regard to social media. And we're, we're really looking to identify level-specific, what does an elementary parent need to know versus a high school parent? And so I just, I encourage everyone to join. The website is hot off the press, but it's also in the bulletin on our, our website, I think, tonight. And we'll continue to promote this and get, get the information out.
When is it again?
It is on March twenty-fourth. It's a Thursday.
Yeah.
From six to eight PM.
Okay.
And, um. The like video to Mrs. Marana.
Yes.
Do you want to hit on that?
Sure. So we, um, are, um, thanks to, um, the Safe Coalition and Jen Knight Levine, we have, um, have some. They are going to fund a screening of Like, um, which is a documentary. Um, about social media and the impact of social media on our teens, and we're going to have it one week to view that, um, we have, with like three thousand views.
Yeah, there's licenses specifically the Franklin community.
Share that link during that week period, um, to all our families in the district. Um, so they'll get to view it and whatnot, and we are also going to show it in our health classes in both the middle school and the high school.
Great.
And possible some of the social skills groups at the high school as well.
Great.
So we're very excited.
Yeah, that meeting this morning was really good. I know Dave and I are willing to help however we can.
Plenty to do.
Plenty of stuff to do, yeah. Vol and told again. Um, our DEI committee, our next meeting is March sixteenth. Um, community relations, our next meeting is March twenty-third. Uh, exciting news, our first community coffee chat will be Saturday, March nineteenth, eleven AM to one PM at the Franklin Public Library. This will be a time for the public to come and meet the new school committee, ask some questions, all within school committee purview. We can come back, um. With answers if applicable. Um, we're continuing to work on our upcoming legislative forum. We're still trying to button down dates with our state legislators, but I'll share more once it's available. If we're ready. Um. Eleven AM to one PM. Yeah, Kelly, uh, reserved us a room.
Cool.
At the library, sorry. Um, all right, so information matters. I'll set, new business, Dr. Hearn.
Um, so looking ahead at the next meeting, uh, a big chunk of that will be with the budget hearing, um, that. Starts the meeting and then a regular meeting will follow from there with a budget discussion. Um, I anticipate that your policies, uh, are coming forward, uh, at. Not only do I anticipate, but your policies will be coming forward, uh, for, uh, a second read and adoption at your next meeting as well.
All right, consent agenda, Dr. Hearn, and we're going to split it out?
Uh, we'll split it out. Um, so the first motion is I recommend approval of the minutes from the February eighth. School committee meeting and the February sixteenth special school committee meeting as detailed.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes as detailed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions?
No.
All right. Seeing none, but we'll come on the motion. All those in favors signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, Carrie's. And for B, I'm going to ask council, uh, committee member McNeil to.
Accuse myself.
Get out.
While he's relocating, I'm going to take the opportunity to note that Thursday's meeting, uh, is six thirty here in the training room. Uh, I'm sorry, here in the chambers, thank goodness.
Oh, my God.
Here in council chambers, six thirty here in council chambers.
Everybody else was wrong. All right, all right, Dr. Hearn.
Okay, so now the motion, I recommend acceptance of a check for twelve thousand dollars from the Franklin Education Foundation as discussed.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve acceptance of a check from the Franklin Ed Foundation as discussed?
So moved. There a second?
Second.
All right, but we'll come on the motion. We're going to do a roll call vote. McNeil, David Callahan.
Yes.
Al Charles.
Yes.
Elise Stokes.
Yes.
Megan Whitmore.
Yes.
Nate Spencer, yes. All right, Carrie's, you can come back. Um. Do we send like a thank you letter? Want to get something like this? Okay.
Miss you guys.
We missed you. Um, all right, payment of bills. Bills are in order, Ms. Stokes, payroll.
Payroll's in order.
All right, executive session. All right. My favorite part, reading all this. Okay. Um, pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A three. To discuss strategy with report, with respect to collective bargaining with the FEARN unit as an open meeting. May have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee, and the chair so declares. Pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with non-union personnel. Executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A one, to consider an open meeting law complaint. Against public officers, namely the members of the school committee filed with the committee by Kyle Thompson and dated February third, twenty-twenty-two. Is there a motion to adjourn into executive discussion as detailed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Neil, Dave.
Yes.
Al, Dave, Stokes.
Yes.
Whitmore, Elise, yes. All right, thank you, everyone. We'll see you in two weeks.